I'm going to call to order the Issaquah City Council Committee Work Session for May 10, 2017. Welcome, everybody. Tolomarts will not be here tonight. He's excused. He is at the Sound Cities Association's Public Issues Committee. He happens to be the chair. So we have some of us here. Also, we have Bob Harrison, City Administrator, Jen Olson, Finance Director, and a couple of other -- whoops. Yeah, lots of staff. Yes. And so, anyway, the first item on our agenda is Agenda Bill 7313: Capital Improvement Plan, presented by Jennifer Olson.
Thank you, Senator. I'm actually not president, and welcome to the council. We're really pleased that we're able to present to you.
Unbuttoned. Good evening. We're really pleased to present to you this evening the Capital Improvement Plan, our first draft here. It's been a little while since we've had the opportunity to go through this with the city council. Our intent tonight, and what we did, and Emily is going to talk a little bit more about the process, but it's been about two years that we had ICMA, International City Management Association, team came in, did an evaluation of our whole capital improvement process, and provided us with a number of recommendations to enhance our process. And finally, we've been able to kind of go through that process this year and present it to you, and Emily will talk a little bit more about that process. As we go through this this evening, we've asked the staff really to focus on the next two years, so 2018 and 2019, even though it's a longer-term plan that is included in the CIP. And primarily, that's because those have the highest, you know, from the staff perspective, highest priority because of the timing, not in terms of importance, but in terms of relative timing of those potential investments. And you're going to see, we got a gap. So we will have to deal with that as we go through the budget process for next year. But tonight, what we're hoping to get from the council, and then at the next time, is as we go through, there are some questions this evening, kind of, if you recall our budget sessions from last year, kind of, you know, identify those questions that you may have about projects, so that when we come back at the next meeting, we'll be able to start to answer some of those. And then I'm sure we're going to have, you know, an opportunity for some prioritization at that point. So when we put the budget together for council to consider this fall, we'll be able to start to understand what that looks like. So with that, Emily is going to speak, and then I think Jen's going to walk us through just a few slides on the overall. And then we'll have several of our department directors that are here. So Brett Heath, our Public Works Director is here, Jeff Watling, Recreation Director, and John Traeger, our IT Manager, as well. So Emily?
Great, thanks. So I just wanted to note some of those changes with our process this year. I'm really very excited to be here with a new, robust CIP. We ask your patience, too, because it's been a new process. Leadership ICMA, as Bob said, came in, gave us some recommendations. We had some consultations with council members and had some workshops with our staff to try to revamp our process internally and externally. And that really picked up steam when Jen arrived as our Finance Director and said, "Yeah, I'm on board with that. We need to do that. Let's change our process." And so Jen and the Finance Department recognized that we should start with policy changes first, and so those have been before council, and you've adopted those adjustments. I won't go through them, but if you remember, one of the key ones was, or a few key ones were emphasizing public engagement in the process and project development and talking about the proposed CIP, and then in the subsequent steps that we go through as projects move from concepts and ideas to final completion. So that was one thing we tried to emphasize. Another was we changed the threshold for what dollar value would be a capital project. We have yet to see exactly how that will ripple through to the operating budget. We anticipate there will be those smaller projects, or equipment in particular, that we're going to need a budget in the operating budget. And another one was implementing some criteria for assessing the projects and trying to assist us as we prioritize. And that rating criteria is just one way that we determine where to situate the CIP, the particular projects in the CIP. There's a lot of variables in terms of timing, funding source availability, urgency for the project, community support for the project, a long list of things that we could consider. But the rating tool helped us to try to apply some subjective, or objective ideas as well. And there have been a lot of process changes on the staff side. We're learning as we go, implementing this new process, and we expect there certainly will be things that we have to modify over the next couple of iterations of the CIP. One in particular is, as we applied that rating criteria, we saw some adjustments we need to make. We made some on the fly, but we still will undoubtedly have a conversation again after we get the feedback from all of you. This is, tonight, we're really focusing on the first two years of the plan. This, in part, is a step toward biennial budgeting that we hope to move toward in the future. Two years seems appropriate, too, for the CIP because capital projects, most of them, the vast majority of what you'll see in the plan, stay relatively constant. You know, they are priorities today. There'll probably be priorities next year. And it's a planning tool. The CIP is a planning tool, and so we expect to modify it as we get new master plans, update visions for the community. And the second year, sort of the off-year of CIP work, now we could spend that time more so on visioning, master planning, long-term funding strategy development, and, of course, update standing projects that do require modifications because we've learned of something new from one of those master plans, or the scope needs to be adjusted, or the costs need to be adjusted. So next year, we're hoping it's not as big of a process, it's not as time-consuming, both for staff and council, and instead, we can channel your energy, our energy, and those other directions. So this is a transition effort to this first year of our two-year process on the CIP, and we know that tonight is just one of the opportunities we'll have to engage the community on the CIP, ask for feedback. As you've seen from the planning calendar, there are a few subsequent touches to the CIP in public meetings, and I know Jen will cover that later. All right. I think I did it.
Thank you, Emily. The proposed 2018/2022 CIP, I'm going to provide you just a very high, kind of, surface overview of the proposed document. The budget book, the capital budget book was, is published, certainly for your review, has a lot of information, project-specific, in the back of the book. And so I'm going to just kind of touch on some of the major points of the five-year plan. You'll find in it that there is also some future. There are some projects that were identified that made the six-to-ten-year, or what we're calling "future," and so we wanted to make sure that we had a very big-picture look at the capital investments that are proposed for your consideration. So the five-year plan, and again, we're going to touch on those year-one and year-two projects, but the total five-year plan is $188 million. That's a big capital investment for this community. The capital budget book might look a little bit different, but what we wanted to do is that we wanted to prepare that based on the asset category where the capital investments are proposed to be made. And you'll see that we have those category descriptions that separate out technology and systems, capital equipment, municipal facilities, so those would be those non-utility facilities in some cases. We have parks and recreation separate from trails, and then, of course, we have transportation, and then we have all of the utility proposed capital investments. So for all those categories over that five-year, that's how we get to the $188,215,366 at this time. You can see that the largest place where investments are proposed are primarily in our transportation asset category, which is understandable because that is an important criteria for the city and the community for making investments in our transportation Then on the funding side, this is a snapshot of the revenue sources that we've identified in order to complete those projects. And so what we've done to improve the process is to identify those funding sources and then cash flow analysis, or funding analysis, to ensure that there is enough. For example, in the capital budget book, you'll find REIT fund and cash flow analysis to help us understand, is our REIT dollars a usable funding source, and do we have enough of them over the long term? And certainly, they're forecasts, and this is a plan. The other mitigation fund essentially collects those impact fees and mitigation fees, and again, we've provided some funding analysis to interpret not only the impact fees and mitigation fees that we estimate that are coming in through development services and a forecast of what's in the pipeline for that, but then also then match them up to the projects in the years where they've been proposed to show, is there enough mitigation? And essentially, at the end of a five-year plan, is there enough, then? Because we know that capital investments don't end at the five-year plan, they go on into the future. So that is also prepared in the book. We've also provided the utility funds, cash flow analysis based on perceived growth and new capital connection charges, and estimating those revenues from a long-term standpoint. So you can see that we have, we've kind of chunked out the types of revenues to show you what we anticipate funding the entire CIP plan. As the City Administrator mentioned, that we have essentially a gap. And so if there's not an actual cash on hand, a known funding source, that would mean that we'd have to have a conversation about issuing debt. And so when we talk about the need or the funding, the projects that were identified that did not have, you know, a fully funded project based on other sources, what we wanted to show you was that the need for issuing debt was primarily in the areas of, for the five-year plan, was in the Parks and Recreation area as well as the Transportation area, and I think that that's fairly well-known. That is, from a debt-bond proceeds potential, would be needing $84 million. That is a heavy lift for issuing debt. And so wanted to show the total future years' need of $152 million for that total ten-year look for capital investment needing funding source potentially coming from bonds, or another source would be the $243 million. So again, quite a substantial list of projects that need a funding source.
I'll go back a little bit, because the numbers, because the two charts used, excuse me, the two charts used different numbers. So in the uses, you show $188 million of need for the five-year, right? And then in the sources, you show $195 million, because that's in, you cut the zeros off of that one. So when you say there's a gap, if you're showing 188 in uses and 195 million in revenue, I'm trying to find the gap.
Well, this is an example of us not being perfect in this transition. Just to let you know that this is a product that is delivered offline, meaning there is not a database where we can prepare this. And so what we want to do is find those misses and make sure that we get those corrected. And that's one of the things that will ensure as we go on that we've got the funding that matches. I do want to direct you then to this slide, and this is also, I believe, in the capital budget book, about the debt and bond proceeds, because this is the one that I would use for that line to talk about the unfunded piece, and that would be the $84 million in the five-year plan.
If you go back to the sources chart, and if you go down to debt-bond--
Yes.
Third from the bottom, 84,977.
Yes.
So it sounds to me like that is titled "debt-bond," but that doesn't mean that, but it's debt-bond or other sources. In other words, we have 84,977 that is unfunded.
Yes.
We don't know where it's coming from.
That's correct.
It's a little bit of a mis-titled.
Mix in there.
Yes.
All right. Gotcha.
All right, thank you.
And so the assumption that to pay that, there'd be some sort of bonding, some debt.
Yes.
Or some other source.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
So then what I wanted to do was to offer up, then, some of the outcomes that would be important for us to consider. And so these are some questions that, as we go through and as you're essentially listening to the department presentations on their projects, these essentially might be some questions that we would want to take away and provide answers to or to have discussion about, and those would be that, are these projects, do they require additional details, or does council have questions on those? Does the mix of the projects that are in this proposed plan meet the council's priorities with regards to capital policy? What is the role of debt in financing the capital projects? And so that might be considering incremental park bonds, incremental transportation bonds, and then, of course, there is the difference between council manic bonds, and that's where the source comes from, the general fund, in order to pay for LTGO debt or that voted debt where that is a ballot measure, and that is often referred to as UTGO, and that's unlimited, and so that comes from excess levy. And then, of course, do we have the organizational capacity in order to complete the projects that are approved in the five-year plan?
Jen?
Yes.
Is this on the website as part of the package for tonight?
I believe it is, yes.
Thanks.
So with that, I am going to, I'm going to leave that here at my overview. I am going to now hand it over to the departments to provide presentations about their projects. What I propose is that I'll bring this slide back up, then, when we start to have some conversations about particular projects, questions that you need answers, additional information, things of that nature.
So while we're getting ready for the first presentation, the agenda notes that we have department presentations, and then we'll have a break, and then we'll do deliberations. So it's a little bit like our budget process, and so I was just pointing that out. So we certainly want to ask questions as part of the presentation, so we're prepared to discuss substantively at the end of the presentations.
Okay, well, so I think you all know me. I'm John Traeger, the IT Manager, for those on TV, and I'll do a brief review of the technology investments. But first, I wanted to show the council why I had them all here for a second. This is a working session, so I wanted to show you something here. So when you log into Office 365 on the web, there's this little key in the top corner, and it shows all the different apps, and there's one that's called SharePoint, and that will bring you to a page that looks something like this. And one of the items on here is the Internet Services, and on there is the council documents. So this is a way to share documents without having to go in and out of the firewall. So you used to have your R drive or your S drive or whatever. Because your new laptops are not inside the firewall, this is a place you can exchange with anybody on staff. So just a little tip and trick there. There it is. Okay, so the first item, well, as you may have noticed, the technology is the top-line item with the smallest numbers, and the first of the technology items is the budget software. So this is a web-based solution that will help with positions, salary, and benefits budgeting. It'll help us with what-if scenario generation. It has multi-year budgeting capacity. It has the global and drill-down visibility as we develop our budgets. It'll streamline and simplify our budget creation, both on the staff side and on your side, as you start going into budget deliberations of your own. It'll enable priority-based budgeting as we start pursuing that path. There's customized reporting, which includes, you know, nice reports that we can expose to the public for finished products or intermediate products, whatever stage we want to do that. And also, it'll have integration with Munis, so at the end product, we'll just shoot the information to Munis, and so what was in the software will be what is available to spend over the course of the next budget year. So this is out there right now. We're taking a look at that software. We've been having a pretty complicated, very manual budget generation process. This will significantly streamline what we've been doing. And then the numbers will add up because it's all in a database, and it's all tied The next item on the list was the recreation software. This is a replacement for the Parks and Rec System software that's known as CLASS. It's at its end of life. It's over 10 years old. It sits on old hardware, and it's no longer compliant for doing e-commerce transactions. So right now, we're doing requirements of discovery this year, and RFP process is underway to select an alternate solution. The major functions of this software include activity registration, field and facility scheduling, LEAK scheduling, and rentals. So we're looking for a vendor-hosted solution, obviously integrating with Munis on the back end. We want a complete e-commerce solution, and the deployment will be significant process change and process improvement, and end-user training effort in the Parks Department. They have a fairly large amount of staff that will be touching this in some way or another as part of their daily routines, but it will significantly streamline their processes and reduce their labor costs for their office, labor costs, but they're currently doing a lot of manual workarounds and paper processes. It all goes away with this new software, and it will really increase citizen satisfaction because right now, trying to book a class on class is not very easy. It's a user-friendly, old-school user interface, and so the new software will be a significant improvement.
I've got a question for you, because it's not specifically about John's presentation. So in the priority column, using Technology Systems on page 25, it says desirable and then acceptable and acceptable, and then as you move through here, it has different, so that's a different one, different priority. So can, is there a key in here, or can somebody explain where that, what those are?
In the capital budget book, on page three of the introduction--
Okay.
--that is where you would find the priorities, and so that there would be serving as the key as to, based on the department ranking.
Page three, yeah.
Okay, you found, okay, oh, great. So that's essentially where that wording comes from, is based on the project rank, and then that's where the essential, desirable, acceptable, deferrable, or hold comes into play in the actual project detail.
Okay. Can we get added in the next iteration of this table of contents?
Certainly.
Thanks.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
John, a question about the recreation software. Sure. Is that the current software, CLASS, had, we've had it for 10 years. So does that mean in our long-range planning, you know, 10 years out, we plan another $150,000 or $200,000 again? Is that the appropriate cycle?
No, it's probably more like five years. But this is cloud-based software, so we don't know. So, you know, the 10 years is because you bought hardware, you're trying to get the maximum life out of that. It's a cloud-based service model, so this is more of a rental model. There'll be, you know, implementation, startup costs, and then you're paying rental.
Okay. So in 2023, on some of these items, your software, we should be, we're going to be seeing something populated in 2023 as well?
You could. Yeah, it's an unknown, right? So the industry moves, and the public's, what they expect, changes, and this is one piece of software that touches our public quite often, so it's really hard to predict where that'll go.
So would we expect also, then, in outer years, to see the same thing from Munis showing up?
Yes.
Okay. So, and we're only looking at two years tonight, but I just wanted to understand, it looked, the table looks like we pretty much make a few investments in the next two years and we're good, and the reality is, they're going to repeat through.
Yeah.
And I was hoping it's 10 years, but it was five years.
Yeah. And we haven't really worked through that because it's changing the amount of upfront capital changes as you move to a rental market, so we have to figure out how that's going to be reflected in those kind of long-range projections.
I'm wondering if it makes sense, then, for council members, especially next year, we'll have so many new ones, if there shouldn't be footnotes in here that say things like that, so that a council member looking at this wouldn't think, "Two years of investment in software, and we're good for a long, long time." It's more, "Two years investment, and then we're going to have recurring costs every five to seven years after that."
Yeah. Right now, what I'm trying to do is stagger the different departments. Every department has a major piece of software that carries it these days. That's the way operations are run in every organization, so we don't want to change them all out at once if we can possibly avoid it, possibly because it's a bandwidth issue for staffing as well as a cost issue.
Right. So if it's an unknown cost, I think maybe a footnote would help, just to say, "They're not determined yet, but we expect to see them rotating through every several years."
Right.
Be helpful.
Absolutely.
Or even in the future years column, if it just said, "Undetermined," or TBD.
Yeah.
So we know there's something there.
There's something coming.
Yeah, that's a good idea, because I hate to just make a wild guess, so I'd rather put, "We don't know," and notate it. Okay.
One million dollars.
All right. So any other questions about recreation software?
No.
Okay.
Then a brief update on the Munis RPE project, which you're probably familiar with. So right now, we're in Phase Two, and so we're working on interfaces, and this year, this summer, we'll be working on purchasing card, changing our whole purchasing process to streamline it, and we'll be doing the initial citizen self-service configuration hopefully this fall. Munis Phase Three will be deployment, utility billing, and financial reporting portals, and that will be tied into the reporting software as well, so there's some pretty large initiatives there. And then the implementation rollout of utility billing will be in the final phase next year, and that's another, that's the other biggest piece of software that touches our public. Everybody pays their water, and so that's a very important piece of software to get out there and do it right. And so this is a roadmap, and it's basically covering-- And so this is a roadmap and it basically covers the different stages. And we're kind of stabilization stage right now after the initial implementation last year. And we're, you know, the actions are to resolve these open issues and do an upgrade to their latest version to reduce our risk and eliminate workarounds. And as we go on through these other steps, mapping and optimization is essentially a design phase to understand our processes, which is something we didn't do in our initial deployment, but now we're doing a lot of process mapping and understanding of as-is-to-be process design. And that'll be worked into reconfiguration of the application as it exists as well as in our implementation, using a similar model, really designing out what is the process for utility billing you want to use in the future. And then configuring the software to accomplish that. And utility billing will reduce a considerable amount of labor used to manage and process bills. And citizen satisfaction will be significantly improved over what we do now. The next item was, this is actually in the capital, the next section.
Equipment.
Equipment section, thank you. And so, but because they're technology-related, I'll cover these and I'll hand it off to the next person. So the PC replacements, our desktop PCs are pretty old. The average age is still hovering around five years. The maximum age, the industry standard, is around four years. But we've got things as old as 11 years still running in our system. So that budget is to try to accelerate and catch up our replacement process. And the goal is to get the average age around two and a half years and the oldest equipment around five years so we don't have reliability issues and increased support costs. And a part of that will be moving to tablets, which are a lower-cost option for certain user types who are mostly just consuming information and just doing a little bit of user input. And server replacement is a similar story, some pretty old equipment. We have 59 servers that we run now. Twenty, a lot of them are physical servers. We'd like to get that down to eight by changing the style and type of servers we use and have more high-availability data center quality servers as opposed to what we've been using in the past. So again, another one, age reduction, average age target to get it to more reliable, high-availability system. Any questions about these last two?
Hold on. So it looks, John, like in the table, they're actually sorted by their scores. We don't see the score in the summary table, but that's how they're listed. The servers ended up quite a ways above PCs.
Well, yeah, I guess. The data is more important than the endpoint devices if you could look at it from that perspective. And.
I'll just also add that, as I mentioned or alluded to at the beginning, that the actual rating scores and even whether it's, you know, in one band or may have been, should have been slightly in the next band above or the band below. This was a test case. And so, and there's a paragraph in the intro section that talks about other factors that we consider. So it wasn't just about the department's raw score when they plugged the project into their rating system, but it also had to do with us stepping back and saying, does that make sense? Should this project have gotten 80 points? You know, how does that relate to this other one in this department that got 80 points? What are the other pieces of information we know? So just, just to note, say, yeah, look at it. We'd love some feedback about whether it's helpful or not helpful. We're still having conversations, staff, about what tweaks we might want to make to make it more useful in the future. But just, I guess we're cautioned not to over-rely on the scores.
And I think you explained it really well in the introduction. I just wanted to make sure, because I don't think we used to rank like this before, that people watching realize this really is in an order. Because you do see the priority category, the band, if you will, but you don't see the points. And so for some within the acceptable category, there's a significant difference in points from the top to the bottom. So, yeah, but it's very well explained in the document.
Stacy?
Yes, Jen.
I might want to add too, also in the capital budget book, in the back of the book with the project detail, that's where you will find that actual number.
Yeah.
And so that, yes, the band is listed here just to show, based on the actual capital budget policy, where these projects fell into that band.
Okay.
Sure.
So the budget software score was 84. And then the Munis software score was 64. And then the class software score was 60. I know that those are all acceptable, but can just the administration, just talk in general about the philosophy you used to use these scores. I know they rank them, but you're proposing, you know, all three of these plus the hardware one for, you know, potentially budget next year, 2018. Now, was there, was there any kind of cutoff? Did you use this, how, with the scoring? I mean, was, are we not seeing some projects because they fell below 60? You know, did you, when you look across all the funding sources and all the potential projects and the relative scores, you know, so when I look at an 84, I accept the scoring. Okay, that seems to be a strong justification. We can drill down and evaluate that. I look at a 60, I'm thinking, okay, why are they proposing this one over maybe something else? And so just, Philip, could you just talk a little bit about how you use that in this, you know, and then use this example, you know, to propose this recreation software even though it has a score of only 60? I know that's acceptable, but we also know we're way over budget in this plan too. So how did you balance those?
We balanced those in a number of ways. You know, certainly we used the band. There were some projects that were ranked by the department and where they came in as a hold. And so they were, and if they were also in future years, then they are not included in this plan just because there was perhaps not enough information or if it was just one of those things where they're, I mean, the amount of funding needed or the amount of unfunded projects was significant. So, you know, that was, that was one way that we removed projects. Because the rankings were new and they're pretty typical from a best-practice standpoint, some of those, if you look at the rankings where they were weighted and they're very subjective based on, you know, the department, you know, looking at the project and then answering the questions. Does this, does this help with, you know, with community development? Is it a legal mandate? Is it something of that nature? And so it certainly comes from that, from that department's opinion about the need to rank that. When you look at some of the projects and some of those, some of those criteria that were more economic development or they were more so for to help with, you know, community initiatives, things of that nature, where, for example, the budget software, when I looked at that from a ranking standpoint, because it is a very important planning tool, both for capital budget and for operating budget, and the heavy lift that the administration goes through in order to prepare the planning document, that helps and that was just ranked higher just because the need to have good planning tools is so important. So then we started to look at funding sources. So for example, for some of the technology and systems, because this is, the funding sources from this, you'll see in some of, most of the projects come from the IT fund. What that means is that that is primarily based on the cost allocation plan. So with IT shifting to an internal service fund, so that would rank higher from a funding standpoint because you would have all of those direct service funds contributing to the cost of these capital investments. And so that would rank higher from a funding source because you have, you have many funds contributing to that aspect versus having to issue bonds for technology improvements. So that, you know, that was part of the selection for some of the technology projects. That answer part of your question?
Yeah, I think it's, it does, and you address some of these projects in specific. I think my question is also a little bit more general and broad. And I think it's going to be something I'm going to pay attention to as we go through this material is, I mean, and I appreciate the ranking that we've done and how useful is it really? But just know that when I, when I see a CIP that is not balanced, in other words, we're going to have to borrow money to get it done. You know, I'm going to really scrutinize what are in or what are out and what kind of criteria and how we did all this because, you know, budgeting is a, if this budgeting software you're talking about buying is like what I'm familiar with, you can actually model multiple budgets. And I'm hopefully, you know, you've, you're going to model a budget that doesn't assume any additional, you know, funds from a bond, for example. And I think then that would really change what you proposed that you would do for us too. So, so, so in general, as I'm, as I'm, you know, hearing about this and taking this in for the first time, you know, with this additional information to help us rank and compare and understand the projects relative to one another and all their funding sources, I mean, that question about how you chose to have them in or out is one I may come back to. So, so thank you for your answer. And now, John, something really specific. So the, you show in the Munis ERP one, it looks like there'll be an ongoing, just like Munis today, we have ongoing yearly costs for the subscriptions for the software. Budget software doesn't have that, doesn't show it in the plan. So I didn't know if, why that would be different. It seems like all that type software has yearly subscription fees today. So maybe that you can get back to us on that.
Okay.
No, no, even the budget software as well.
I can answer that, I'm a council member. The budget software would have an annual maintenance cost.
Right.
It is relatively low compared to the Munis annual maintenance costs. Just checking the details. It did include in the project detail sheet, there's about a $5,800 annual.
Okay, that's what that is.
Okay.
Okay.
And so I just wanted to add too, just to add a little humor to this process is that we might want to consider changing the rank for the budget software to 100.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so generally as well, now we're going to go through this process. This is the first time we're seeing all of this. But do we, I mean, you've got these, these projects that John talked about, you know, in 2018. I mean, so I'm going to take that as an early signal at this point. You're thinking that the administration is going to propose a budget that has these in them as well. I know we're going to have to go through this process still, but that's really an early signal to all of us on what you intend to do.
Thanks, John.
Okay. Who else has got equipment?
Next presentation would be our police chief.
Good evening. I have two items that are in this proposed CIP and they both are focused upon communication. The first item, I believe, is on page three and it is the public safety radio coverage. Currently, our building does not have in our lower level, in our jail, within our firing range, in the lower parts of our building, we do not have radio communications capabilities. So the addition or the extension of the public safety radio coverage would assist police, fire, corrections, and aid with communications. It would increase the efficiency and the safety of our personnel. Obviously, we're looking at that as a 2018 project. And it would be funded through a combination of mitigation funds. That's what we're proposing. The other item that we are referring to is the third dispatch radio console. And really what this is about, this is on page 21 of the capital equipment section. This is really about building capacity and redundancy in our dispatch center. Currently, we have two radio consoles and we serve three jurisdictions, Isaguas, Snoqualmie, and North Bend. We have to split up the cities between the two consoles and we typically have two to three dispatchers working at a time in there. When we have major events, special events such as Sammies Days or political rallies or major critical events, the need for having the third dispatcher and ability to communicate on the radio is very important. We've also, it's, a redundancy in the system is important for the emergency management as well. The two current consoles are aging and they're over 15 years old. They are due to be replaced. The two current ones are due to be replaced with the new PCERN radio project. That's the King County Radio Project. And they will be probably 19 or 20s when they would be, 2020 is when they will be replaced. But having a third console would then increase our capacity. Even last month, we did have a failure of one of those and we have to utilize our current backup systems that are really rudimentary. They are similar to the portable radios that our patrol officers use on the street. And so it really slows the efficiency of the dispatch center. And again, that's a 2019, we're looking at a 2019 project utilizing mitigation money. Yes?
So looking at the summary sheet, you have one item at the top and one at the bottom.
Yes.
And I guess my question was, so if there's some budgetary decisions and not everything on this list gets picked, I would assume that the third dispatch radio console costs roll into 2019?
Yeah.
That's how this would work? So they just sort of carry forward? And then that there'd be a reevaluation in terms of ranking? Because you're competing with a whole different set of projects and maybe some different time issues. And so while it ranks low this year, it could rank high in 2019?
Correct.
Yeah, it was along the same lines because that last one is a score of 44, which is in the deferrable category, which reads project is, says project is conflict or probably is in conflict with a master plan or for which there are serious need, cost justification, or timing questions. So is that one, let's, let's say that one's on the bubble. What is the, what is the, why is it deferrable by this scoring? Can you give us, put it in that context for us?
Yeah, go ahead. I can, I can add a little bit of, again, it's the scoring matrix and there's a lot of those pieces of.
So when we, one thing I wanted to clarify, Mary Lou, you said that we would anticipate re-scoring this project next year. We would not. The score the project achieves this year should be remarkably similar to what it would achieve next year because we're using the same criteria to evaluate it. Now, your question about then how would it rank?
Compare.
Yeah, compare when looking at the other 2019 projects. That's, that's a good, good question. We'd have to go through this same exercise that we described, having gone through this year and sitting back and saying, okay, what is it? Now that we have ranked the projects according to this criteria, what else do we know? What's feasible financially from an implementation standpoint? What's, what's the urgency? What are the available funding sources next year? And so that, this is meant to be a two-year plan. So unless we have significant changes to project scopes or budgets or overall visions, we wouldn't anticipate going back and re-rating every project. And so there, there's a little bit of work in that off-year to situate projects after we've gone through the budget process and we know indeed what's being funded in 2018. Then we have to bump things out, for example. But we wouldn't go through this whole exercise of re-scoring. And you all are sensing what we have felt in using the scoring tool. It's not the only variable that has gone into where we have placed projects in the plan. Part of it is where we felt we had the funding, what we thought we could accomplish in each year, a variety of factors. The scoring itself was only one little piece.
It seems like the two pieces that you have on here relate to stuff that is very quantifiable with data. For example, I was looking for call volumes and other things. And not for the CIP, but during budget process, I would think when these things show up, it would be good to have a little more data about, to actually quantify what the issue is that you're trying to address with a piece of equipment.
Sure, sure. Yes, we can, we can accomplish that.
Yeah, well, I do want to just, I'm still thinking about that question. So, so I hear you. It's not the only, only thing, but I also, they don't seem to be in harmony here because again, if it falls into deferrable, you're saying there's, there's, you know, the need, the cost for it, the justification, the timing. We have some real questions about all of these. But then I just heard a testimony which sounded a little bit. all of these. But then I just heard a testimony which sounded a little bit different. For example, we had one failure, so we didn't have a backup. Well, okay, okay. That's, that, maybe the justification is higher than you gave it. So, I'm, I realize we're, we're all doing this publicly, all for the first time, but I'm just working with the material that we have. And so, I'm, that's as much feedback as anything. I just heard, well, gosh, you know, maybe it's more urgent, but, but.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
This category suggests maybe that it isn't.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the labels create an impression that I'm not sure we're quite ready to make. When you look at, at the scoring sheet that you all reviewed several months ago, you knew that each particular criterion had a point range of one to five points, and then each of those criterions had a weight factor. So, we tried to make science out of it. And so, when you take SCOTTS two projects, it might have been that one of these projects scored very highly on something that had a, had a strong weight to it. But as we sat back and we looked at it, we said, okay, but what's the urgency factor? What, what else do we know that somehow didn't get represented in that raw numeric score? And so, that's the story that he's telling. So, I think that these are excellent questions in terms of, I see this label attached to this project. It makes me think that perhaps we can put it off, but, but what are, what are the other things that we know? So, these are excellent questions to, to ask about how we then sat back and tried to prioritize them, and tried to make them fit in this funding, landing document.
So, if I may just suggest quickly, then, you know, if there's this additional consideration, and once you said, hey, you know, we, actually, we ended up using the, the available funding source, and that kind of moved it over the line. So, any other additional narrative like that, if it's, if you've captured that, would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think that as we are, and I, great comments and observations. And, and as we're talking about that, I can envision there being sort of footnote creep. It'll only rank this, but oh, wow, this, you know, eh. And then all of a sudden, we have the CIP we had before. So, that would be my concern. If it truly, if it, if we're truly not getting the score reflection that it should get, then perhaps we should look at the way we define the scoring, not adding footnotes. Anything else?
Okay. Next capital.
Good evening. Brett Heath, Public Works Operations. Let me pull up my. It's on the, it's the thumb drive. That one right there. Okay. Okay, so we have a, we're going to cover Public Works Operations items. So, we're going to go through, start with equipment, and we'll get into facilities, transportation, and stormwater. So, we have some items spread throughout there. I'll try and give you the page number of, as we go along in each one of those categories. So, to start off with, we are on the equipment, and that's page five on the, on the equipment side. And let me just, let me see what I need to do here. There we go. Okay, so the first item, we have heard a lot about NPDES permitting, and the requirements go along with that. There are, we are seeing quite a bit of pervious pavement being installed, pervious pavement as well as pervious concrete for sidewalks. One of the challenges that we have is maintaining that system. So, it's a NPDES regulated stormwater system. And in order to make sure that the pavement continues and the concrete, sidewalk, concrete sidewalks continue to infiltrate water at their design rates, they need to be cleaned and maintained on a regular basis. So, something we've been, we have been running some pilot programs to try and find out what's the best way to do that. We've identified some equipment that can help us out in that. So, that's item number EU 005, is the pervious pavement cleaning machine. And the intent there is to help us maintain the stormwater facilities. So, if there's no que, yes?
A question about that. So, that is also a, a construction method that private companies are also using. And so, are we proposing to purchase technology similar to what they currently have, or what they currently rent to do it?
Yeah, so, we've been looking at quite a bit of different types of equipment and see, and this is, seems to be one of the ones that performs the job better. It's a challenge. You can see some of the photos up there. The upper left, that's what happens to pervious sidewalks. They turn into pervious moss carpet. We have to, we've been pressure washing pervious pavement. So, a lot of parking lots are pervious pavement now. We have quite a few of those around, as well as Rainier Boulevard North is also pervious pavement. So, the current system is very slow and arduous and time-consuming. So, this, frankly, you know, this is something that was, somebody's had a great idea, let's do pervious pavement. Kind of got the, the idea out in front of the technology to take care of it. Department of Ecology is also still struggling with what's the best way to do this. So, so far, this is, looks like one of the better options. Okay?
So, a follow-up to Mary Lou's question you asked about the equipment, is, is it an option to contract to have that work done? You don't have to, yeah, specialty equipment and.
Contracting, this kind of cleaning is hit and miss right now. It's certainly a possibility, but you will, over time, you're going to pay more for it than, than the, owning the equipment.
Do we know that? Or, I mean, I would just, it's just a question that I have that I think we should look at.
Okay. Second item, page 13, is the Talus storage site cover. So, we have a storage site over at SR 900. It was built as part of the Talus project. And the storage bins are not covered. This is just an option. You can see in the lower right, those are some covers we've installed on our maintenance facility to, for sand and spoils areas. Same situation here. We need to keep the, the sand drier in the winter time, so we can use it without breaking it up. And also, for storing spoils there, we need to keep the rainwater off the spoils, because that then drains into the stormwater system. So, this project is to install covers over the storage areas. Questions?
I was just thinking about our budget process, and when we go through and ask questions, and the administration makes a list of those questions. Is somebody making a list of those questions, so that we don't have to circle back during deliberations and try to remember everything that we asked?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, so I would go back to the prior question I, I don't know that it's a question I have for next time, but certainly by budget time, if we're considering things for next year, I would like some sort of analysis of, you know, when the, that type of equipment pays for, I mean, just, I don't know that everything you consider, but I think we want to make a good decision.
We do that, yeah.
Question, Brett. Are these storage facilities spread throughout the city, and is this the only one that's not covered?
It's the only one currently not covered, correct. Other storage sites are covered. Check that. Isiqua Highlands is not covered.
It's not a problem. Not the same kind of problem that you experienced.
It's a different situation than what we have here currently, yeah.
Question, Brett.
Yes.
Brett, visual impact of that cover, is that right on 900? Is that going to be visible?
It sets back against the hillside. It would be very, not noticeable.
It's behind trees.
Yeah. It sets up, I don't know if you've noticed it, you know where P5 is, the P5 ponds for Talus?
I don't know them by number.
Okay, okay. Not very visible. They sit quite a ways back off of SR 900, up against the hillside and, and vegetation.
Okay, so then the picture you showed, that height.
Well, that's our, so the photo, photo lower right, that's our maintenance facility. So, that's just to let you, give you an idea of what we're looking at. That's not the Talus loca, Talus location over here, you can see that's up against the, the upper photos, and the one on the left. Those are up against the hillside at Talus.
I understand. So, but you're looking at the same kind of structure?
Yes.
Same height?
Similar tru, structure, yes. Similar height. Height's necessary, so the dump trucks don't pull it down when you back in there and raise the bed.
So, is this storage area, or the storage site, is that permanent or temporary?
The storage site's permanent.
It's permanent, okay. They move that to another location if you?
You can move the, the structure, yes. It, the structure itself is actually semi-permanent, if you will, because it's a fabric cover. So, it, it does have a life roughly around 15 years or so, depending on what kind of storms and other exposure it gets. But these can be dismantled and moved or adjusted if, as necessary. Because they just sit on ecology blocks on the bottom, and they're, they're strapped down to that. They have a metal frame, and then a fabric covering that goes over that. So, it could be moved to a different location. Okay? Excavator, compact excavator, this is actually just, this is one item, not just, but this is one item that's left over from Isiqua Highlands, Schedule K. We're currently filling the need in this area with a down-fleated backhoe, when that, at some point, is going to reach the end of its life. And we, our proposal is to replace that with a compact excavator, so. Any questions on that? Okay, next one, facilities?
Yeah, just, just kind of back to the other question, because this one's way down the list, that deferable category. Again, so just kind of some additional justifications. And I read some of it in here, but I guess interesting, I, maybe what I picked up on it was mainly like, sounded like a lot of trails and so forth, but then, and it looks like a lot of water sewer and so forth as well, so I was using that.
So, there's a, Parks Department's looking at a very small excavator, I think, for trail maintenance. This is a larger one.
Okay, this is a different one.
Mostly for stormwater maintenance, yeah, stormwater facilities. So, this is a, we have a lot of sediment traps, ponds, ditching, installations, things like that that we need to do, and that's what the excavator would be used for. So.
Thank you.
It's in lieu of a, another backhoe. And the deferable piece, again, I think Emily's already spoke to them, the scoring issue on that, it's not indefinitely deferable.
It's not a category?
Yeah. So, okay, over on facilities, page three, facility, excuse me, maintenance facility improvements. This is really a combination of three different items, so I'm just going to walk through those three items. I've, I've sublabeled them, one, two, and three. So, we have a, a lot of steel structures on the facility. It's, they're, what's her team, it's built and finished in 2003. So, we're in 14 years now. They're due for recoding, so they need to be cleaned, recoded. That's one piece of this. You'll see, I believe, on this, on the back page, the spreadsheet page that goes along with this item, you'll see the cost for each one of those expenses. So, we have steel coating. We have a house, an old house on the property that, we call it the mouse house, is due for demolition. So, it's been there for quite a few years. We need some additional storage space on the site, and this proposes to take the house down, fill in the, excavate where the basement was, fill that in, level the site, fence it, and bring in some more temporary storage on, in that area. So, this is all included in that house demolition project. And I think I might have skipped over the first one. Nope, let's see. Hopefully, ah, okay, I did. I apologize. I skipped over the first one.
That's, I'm lost.
Yeah, so this is, this is replacing our, our overhead door springs. We have quite a few doors on the facility, obviously. The springs are failing at a pretty good rate. They were, I think, 15,000 cycle springs when they were installed. We are, they're reaching the end of their life. We want to install some longer-life springs and pick up some extra, because they take a while to get when they do break, and then the doors are inoperable when that happens. So, that's what that project is about. Any questions on that? So, there's three different ones. Some of these, like the springs, are scalable. Doesn't have to be done all at once. Okay, transportation, we have two projects under transportation.
Hang on, just because I was going back and forth. I, I missed your demolition one, because I'd lost where you are.
I'm sorry.
Because you jumped around. So, I, so I wasn't able to hear what you were saying.
Okay, so, on the house demolition.
Yes, please, thank you.
Let me go back up. There we are.
And that's under, because I don't see.
It's one of, it's under the maintenance facility projects.
Great.
Okay. So, they were just, the descriptions were just cut and pasted and combined into one description. So, it doesn't, if you read through there, it's a little hard to tell which one it's talking about. So, I think it starts off with springs, goes into the painting, and then it goes into the house demo. So, we'll clean that up in the next iteration here. But the house demo is just that, demolishing this old house, bringing in some temporary storage.
And where are we at here?
Okay, so, up over in the upper left, it's off of Juniper Street. So, if you go to the end of northeast Juniper Street, it's on the northeast corner of our facility. There's an old building there, old gray building, next to the Isiqua Glass.
Right.
Okay. So, right across from the boat storage facility.
Right, yeah, got it.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Transportation, it's the overlay project. We've had lengthy discussions on that over the last couple of years. I don't know if you have any questions on that, but this is the, the annual maintenance overlay project.
It is actually in here.
You're all over our packet, so where are you now?
I'm sorry. I'm in, I'm in transportation, and we're on page 19.
119 of two, so.
Yeah, 19 doesn't matter.
Oh, yeah, I don't have the entire packet here. I apologize. It's 19 of, on the electronic version.
So, the 80, the score of 84 was the unconstrained budget needs, and what, what do we have in here? 900, 954. We have the unconstrained.
No, that's not the unconstrained.
900, 954. It goes 900 to 1.1 million. So, where is that on your?
So, so this line right here roughly is the.
Blue line?
Is a line that we've talked about in the past, and that's around 1.6 million.
Okay. And where is, show me on the graph where these estimates are.
They're not on the graph.
Not on the graph.
Those were, I think, maybe the mayor's office can speak to where those numbers came from.
Okay. Just, it would be interesting to see the unconstrained versus the budgeted, just to see it. I mean, I think the discussion we had before was, is 84 the right number? Is 78 the right number? So, it'd be interesting to me, what, during budget time?
Right.
To see a graph that shows what these numbers do.
Yeah. The, the blue line on the lower right-hand graph, that represents essentially status quo over time, and that is the 1.6 million.
I might add, status quo for the PCI that we have at this point in time, not necessarily the funding level that we have. So, what Mayor's Office and Finance did is, we said, again, what can we afford? And we've taken roughly that 900,000 that's in this year's budget, and we've inflated it.
A little bit.
A little bit each year.
So, what's the PCI now?
The pavement condition index right now is about, what, 70s?
70, 75, 76 in that neighborhood.
And that's what's reflected here, more or less?
No.
That's what's in the blue line.
Right.
If you were able to fund it at one and a half plus million dollars a year. What we would need to run to answer your question is take our 900 inflated every year, run the model, and then tell you what the degradation of the PCI curve would be.
That's kind of what, I just, for a budget time, just kind of know what we're getting for what we're spending in this proposed spending.
Sure.
Because it, it's hard to pull it out from here. I think if I was looking at this, and hadn't gone through last year's budget discussion, I might think that we're budgeting for 84, so.
We can do that, and, you know, certainly, I think part of that conversation needs to, again, be what's, what's the target that we want to achieve, and then what is feasible, since this is general fund, as well.
So, it's a budget question.
Yeah. I think the green line, that's 800,000 a year. So, that's.
Remember that one? Remember that one?
Yeah. Remember that number? Okay.
Yes, I remember that one.
So 900 is going to be not quite so steep, but similar.
Thanks.
Yeah. So we'll run a new, we'll run a new set for the budget. Okay. The next one down is Project TR-018. It's the ITS camera system upgrade. So the ITS cameras, cameras that were installed with the ITS system, running around 10 years old now. You can see the, the quality between the current cameras we have up on top and one of the newer cameras, which is down at the bottom. The, the old cameras require adapters, which are becoming difficult to get in order to convert the signals to work with the software that we have. So this proposal is to change out the, the old analog cameras with IP-based cameras. That will simplify troubleshooting, maintenance, and definitely improve the, the quality of the, of the video that we're getting. Yes?
So we do this once in 2018 maybe, and then we never do it again? Nothing in the outer years?
Yeah. You're going to be about another 10 years out. You're going to probably have to replace cameras again.
So we'll fall off of that 10-year. It's really, okay.
Yeah.
But that's something you replace on about a 10-year cycle?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah. They'll, these guys, they'll tell you their cameras last forever, but you can see from the upper photos that that's not really the case. And technology, of course, goes away, changes, and then we run into interface problems. Currently, we're, to troubleshoot the system, we have to take two laptops out, one with an old set of software on it, and one with a new set, in order to just troubleshoot the system, so.
So can I ask a simple question? So you talked about the quality of the cameras. What do we use the cameras for? And does it really matter that we need to have perfect pictures? I mean, we're not putting them on Christmas cards, and we're not taking pictures of license plates. So tell me what the value is of getting new cameras?
Well, the big value is, you're going to get clarity, but the big problem we're having with this is that technology is old, and we're having a difficult time keeping the cameras operational and finding adapters that will adapt that old technology to the current system. And like I said, one of the issues that we're having with this is we're, we're taking a, laptops out that have old software loaded on them and new software loaded on them and have to use them simultaneously in order to, to work these systems. So it's just, this, this technology is at the end of its life.
I might add just a little story to this. My last city had one version older, and we bought the last pieces on eBay. So we're going to, this city is going to arrive at that same place soon. I'd also say that the cameras are used for our management of our traffic control systems, but they are also one of the most popular things on our website for residents to check to just kind of get a sense of what's the traffic world look like tonight, or today, and also use, they're heavily used when we have storm situations. Another use is, we certainly have used them from time to time when we have large-scale events, to get a sense of kind of crowds and how public safety might need to operate with, with those large crowds. So they have a lot of different uses. So if you have old cameras and then you get new cameras, and then you've got old laptops, and so is there a ripple effect here? Or is it just cameras that we need? Do we need other things to go along with new cameras?
The cameras, and I mentioned the server in there.
Okay.
But that's, that essentially takes care of the issue that we're currently having.
Not?
We have other software, but that's going through an update cycle as well. So some of the issues we have is when you have old, old technology like this and you have some new technology, it becomes problematic trying to update the newer technology, because then it is no longer compatible with the older. So it gets into a real, it's a real problem for our signal techs right now.
So does it capture, so this captures cameras, and then you've got server. What about all the other costs that we have go, that are required to upgrade that, upgrade that system? How do we capture all of that?
So a lot of the software, the other software systems are on an annual upgrade basis right now. So they're already being covered in the budget, in the normal operating budget.
So does this do anything actually to upgrade the ITS quality itself? It's just the cameras we're doing, so it doesn't upgrade the ITS program?
No. This isn't, this isn't controllers or any of the control software.
Yeah. So it won't improve functionality of any traffic lights or anything of that nature?
No.
That's correct. Traffic Task Force actually had a pretty lengthy discussion about that technology and what level of investment might be needed in order to see a return on the investment. But this is just for the cameras.
Thank you.
It's notable how the Art Fund has to make a contribution to these, full $783. That was fine-grained planning. Your budgeting is obviously pretty detailed.
Anything else?
Question, Emily. The Task Force recommendation, is that a project that's captured in here anywhere?
No, it's not. I, I can give you some more background on that, but in a nutshell, the Task Force learned that that level of investment that would be needed is fairly substantial now, and the return wasn't as good as what you'd like to see. And I think it makes sense for the city to keep, there was a question too about whether that technology had modernized as much as we would have liked. And so I, I think it's just premature to contemplate that right now.
Great. Thanks.
Okay. Last item is under stormwater utility. It's the first item under your stormwater utility, and it's infiltration system at our maintenance facilities. So currently have a problem with our infiltration system at the, at this facility. It doesn't have an overflow. Should have had one installed when it was put in, but it didn't, and the system's kind of degraded to the point where it's getting problematic. Any, pretty much any kind of storm, and we have water-over-roadway signs at our north gate. If you're unlucky enough to drive through the middle of that, you'll swamp yourself. So this project is taking, running a stormwater line from the arrow on the lower right, out to Juniper, and down to First Avenue Northeast as an overflow for the infiltration system. The other issue we're having with this is when it backs up, it contaminates the filter system. So we're changing the filters out more often than we should need to.
It's ST-016.
Not necessarily a question about that project, so I'll wait and see if there's a project one. It's just a stormwater question in general.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
It is a question for Brad. It's just not about that project.
It's about any of these projects?
It's about something that's missing. We didn't ask, do that, bring that up at deliberations?
No, I'd ask now.
Okay. There has been very limited conversation, but something has been mentioned before about talking about, especially in the central Isaguacaw area, a stormwater, a combined stormwater capture that could be built as an amenity and an incentive to bring business, bring new development into the central Isaguacaw area, such as they've done. I think they've done it in Redmond, and I think they've done it in Auburn. It's a combination kind of an operations and an engineering thing, and maybe Sheldon wants to talk about it, but I'm wondering why a project like that isn't showing up on our radar. So maybe I'll leave it to Sheldon to talk about it.
Got that.
And later, whenever he's doing his other projects.
Probably answered the question that we haven't, not a policy anywhere to do that. It's not part of our system. It's not one of our assets. It's not something we have to maintain.
It's not.
It's a project that we would have to first approve at a policy level.
Right. And I guess, how do you start the policy conversation about something that would end up potentially on the CIP? Where does that happen? I guess that's maybe more the question, is if there are some, some things that we should be looking at from that point of view, and eventually they end up on the CP, CIP, where do you start that conversation?
Just like we start any other policy conversation. Somebody, either the administration proposes it, or...
Or we request it.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Next.
So, sorry, but I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, so I'm going to walk you through the projects, beginning with transportation. The 12th and SR-900, it's on page three of that section in your book.
The, the number?
Okay.
Of the, of the capital budget number. Brad had them on all his slides.
Budget number TR-004.
Thank you.
I got it highlighted here. Okay. Wrong mouse. So the 12th and SR-900 project, which is the top one up here, it's TR-004. Okay. Sorry. That project is the intersection over there by Holiday Inn and Tully's and City Hall Northwest. That's part of the development agreement with Costco for improving that to have a double-left turn coming out, turning left to go south on SR-900, as well as creating a right-turn pocket from SR-900 into 12th. And it also includes improvements for bike lanes and sidewalks along 12th as it enters the Pickering area. The next project is Southeast 62nd Street Extension, and that's project number TR-007. That project is currently under construction. It's a new road and bridge connecting East Lakes to Mammoth Parkway to Lake Drive that is under contract right now and under construction. The next project that is within the two-year period here is the Northwest Gilman Boulevard Improvements. That's on page nine of the section under transportation with project number TR-016. That one is in the first two years in 18, 17, 18, and 19 is really working through public engagement and design work towards the latter part of that, with an, you know, need to still just look at funding sources for construction, you know, post 2019. Newport 900 to 54th. We're beginning this year, public engagement on that one. Yes?
So the retaining wall repair one, you did that earlier discussion? We talked about a threshold for it getting on into the CIP, and the 15,200, it kind of seems like a small number. Is it just the project number broken out over two years? So that's TR-0...
The Black Nugget Wall you're speaking of? The Black Nugget Wall is, looks at funding in 2021 and 2022.
Oh, it's 515,000.
515,000.
Well, that's a big number.
Yeah. It looks a little funky up there.
That's a big number. Thanks.
Oh, in 2020, the 515,000?
Yeah. Kind of looks like a dollar sign, but that's...
No.
Well, I think that rises to the bar.
So, okay. So moving back to Newport 954th, that's on page 11 of the transportation section.
Can I get you to go back one more time?
Sure. You bet.
Did you do Gilman Boulevard improvements?
I did. I can repeat that. That's not a problem.
I guess my question was, in the last two years, or sorry, last year and this year, we're looking at almost $2 million in traffic lights on Gilman Boulevard. And we're currently doing a survey of Gilman Boulevard to talk about what it might look like in the future. So why is the investment so low on that section of road if we've just committed, you know, over $2 million worth of lights? I was just saying, more lights, crosswalks, wouldn't that show up somewhere in this?
The 18, 19, and 20 is working through the design processes, public involvement, public engagement, and working through the design. The actual construction is out in the future years.
Okay.
And it's well over the number that you're talking about.
So it's out, it's more than 10 years out?
We don't know that yet.
We don't know.
And we don't know yet what project we need to cost estimate for in terms of construction. So the investments that have been made this year, last year, for traffic control are needed today, more conditions of development as well as public safety needs. And then this project is really about what the future design needs to entail. We'd anticipate that would still involve traffic control elements, but we don't know yet what the construction phase of this project is.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense. But I think then, under that final column, outer years, it ought to say TBD, because if we're anticipating that we could have expenditures in the 10-year period, it should be TBD and not a dash, which makes me think we're not doing that.
Agreed. Agreed. I think that came up in an earlier project. We'll, we'll try to catch that in the next iteration and just put a TBD or, or some sort of note like that.
Awesome.
Yeah, that's a good point, because the work that we're doing in the three years, at the end of three years, we should have a decent estimate of what it would cost to construct.
So can I ask a general, so how does this list relate to the CIP? And how are they different? And, I mean, I know most of the answer to that question, but I also think that we have a lot, much longer list. The CIP has a much longer list. Is that right or not?
The CIP, I believe, is the same as this list. That's typically how it is, is the CIP matches the CIP.
Okay. So this is just now scored?
Correct.
Okay. Then that's...
Right.
Scored and put into years and funding sources described. Yes. Okay. I wanted to...
One of the confusing parts historically has been, we've always had to reiterate that CIP is a non-prioritized document.
For a different purpose.
For a different purpose. But in this case, the, in all cases, the CIP has always been the transportation subset of your capital improvement program.
Could we not use this prioritized list to shore up the need for money for a project on the CIP to show maybe it's a priority? Anyway, it doesn't matter.
But, but, yeah, budgeting is up to the council's discretion on which ones that you guys want to budget and win.
Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to add on the Black Nugget Wall. So there was a proposed hotel that got caught up in the moratorium, and that, the conversations we were having with the developer at that time is that the, a large section of the wall would be, would have been taken out and replaced by the developer as part of that, but there was still some remaining portion that, there was an opportunity for the city to partner on that. That cost does not reflect that. That cost reflects the city taking 100% ownership of the wall, which is all ours right now.
All right.
So moving on, any questions on the Newport 954th? Okay. Newport Maple to Sunset project, that's, sure.
Yeah. We didn't, we didn't go through that one, so let's talk about that one.
Sure. You bet. The Maple to Sunset you're talking about? Or 54th, 954th?
Yeah. 954th, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. That one, this year, we're moving forward with public engagement to go through some workshops with the neighborhoods and the public about what that section of road is going to look like and function like. And the idea behind this project is, over the next couple of years, we're going to be working through the public process and design, and the funding for construction is still, needs to be determined, but we have some estimates out there. The estimates do not include reductions in cost due to frontage improvements that the developers are doing as they develop along that corridor. So this is as if there was nothing happening along that corridor today. Those would be the costs that we'd be looking at approximately.
Right. So I, when you're looking more detail, there's, there's no Isaguacaw funds in the, in the first couple of years here. I'm wondering why that is. There's nothing at all. We're doing planning and so forth, but...
Yeah. Yeah, we haven't had a dedicated source yet from city funds. The project scope and the cost estimate is a reflection of what we put forward in the bond. And so, that was our opportunity to, one opportunity to seek funding for that. We haven't decided, as we've talked about, what's planned beyond trying to find other sources of revenue and for which projects, so that's why you're not seeing anything there.
You didn't get my question. As I see it, there's no funds for planning or, you know, the concept and so forth, that we're talking about working now in this year, and I assume into 18 as well. In the detail, it's all just, you know, developer grant funds. There's nothing for the city.
Okay, I see what you're looking at.
See what I'm looking at?
I do.
So, I just, I know we're doing, I mean, that's great to show their input. That's excellent, but I think we're planning, putting some, at least into some planning in that time.
Yeah, absolutely. So, at least, so what we have done thus far is put together a proposal that you've approved in your 2017 budget for this concept plan work, and that's shown in the appropriated-to-date column.
Right.
With the general fund being the funding source for the 318,000. So, I think we're anticipating, once we wrap up that phase in 2017, the next phase really goes into more of that preliminary engineering design work. And, I don't know, Sheldon, if you can talk about what the assumptions would be on funding source on that.
Yeah, assumption right now, this wouldn't really be in our budget for anything we spent on it, the way it looks.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that number again, and that's a good point, Councilmember Ramos.
Well, actually, if I, so, explain the developer contribution. So, that is not, that's not mitigation or impact. That is their own improvements due to their necessitated by their own projects?
That one, go ahead.
Stacy?
Okay, so that's a little bit confusing, because the, in 2018, it does show our planned expenditures to equal the revenue, and if the revenue is there, just due from their own improvements, okay, we have a contingency built in there, even though we're not doing any work. We still are going to have expenses related to planning, design, and engineering. Am I reading that correctly?
You are reading that correctly. The budget proposed in 2018 is under the planned, design, engineering work, and so that is, is exactly correct.
So, clarify for me, with the developer contribution.
And that would be the source of funding that would, that in this plan, where we anticipate cover those costs in 2018.
What type of contribution?
The developer contribution, I asked Sheldon to help me out there, but it would be that private contribution that would come from the developer. I mean, that's the funding source, the particulars to that. I'm not sure if we have that level of detail yet.
Assume such as the requirement, the roundabout or whatever they're working on is a requirement. Those are the things we're talking about that are in here, right? That's a developer contribution. That's a requirement of the development.
That could possibly be what it is, yeah.
Are these just estimates? Guestimates? What?
They're estimates, guestimates.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see, so, it's not like it's money pulled to be pulled from either mitigation or impact fees from the mitigation fund, right? This is, they're doing some improvement, and part of their cost of doing that is these payments to the city to provide planning, design, and engineering.
That's correct. That's how this particular plan.
Thank you.
Paul, the project is not eligible to use the mitigation impact fees. It's not on the impact fee project list. So, your statement's correct there, that it wouldn't be able to come from the mitigation fees.
We generally haven't seen a category of revenue, which is developer contribution, before. So, this is new. I don't recall seeing that in a budget book before. Here, here's the source of revenue, developer contribution. So, just getting, I just wanted to be absolutely clear on what that was. I would just add, and just in general, there's another project on here as well. So, this one, Newport Way, along with the earlier one, the intersection of 17th and the first project in your list here.
Right.
You know, both, you know, currently saying that if we're going to do these, we're going to have to get fund money. So, I think it's just a conversation for the council that, you know, as we look at, right away, in this capital budget, but also as we look at the, you know, the budget later this year for next year, you know, we're, you know, we could have more of a conversation about making a commitment to this additional work that we're doing, you know, is, you know, that we recognize that, you know, we're going to have, you know, we cannot identify the funds right now to do all this. And so, we're making an investment, and we really don't know if we're going to be able to complete that.
Which one are you currently on, Sheldon?
Assuming that the conversation on SR 954th is complete, I'm now moving to Newport Way, Maple to Sunset.
You have a question?
Sure.
On the rest of these. So, we have quite a list on transportation. I'm just asking the question, do we want to go through each one of them? Or do we want to stop at each one and call for questions?
There five or six more?
There's third, like, yeah.
Only the first two years.
Only 18 and 19?
Yes. We've been only doing the 18, 19 ones so far.
That is correct.
We just have shorter lists, so it's not as obvious.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks for pointing that out.
So, project number TR 023, on page 13 of that section of your packet, Maple to Sunset, Newport Way. That project is redoing the intersection improvements at Maple Street and Newport Way, as well as improving the corridor with three roundabouts, Juniper, Holly, and Dogwood, adding a lane southbound for a certain length. And the project has grant money from PSRC, as well as some other earmark money from the federal government. That's a carryover from another project. We're currently still waiting for PSRC to make the money available to us. Otherwise, we would have begun the design process this year.
That should be earlier than 2021. I know they've delayed it, but it's showing that it's not available to 2021.
This is from the PSRC aspect of it.
It's the federal grant money.
Well, there's two federal grants. There's PSRC, and then there's the federal earmark money. The federal earmark is 3.6 million, and then PSRC was for design, which is 1.8 something million.
Is this year?
So, the PSRC should have come in in 18 and 19. And the federal money, yeah, see, we have in previous years, the grant federal, 1.816. That's just going to show up in 2018 instead of 2017, is what's going to happen. So, what you're seeing in the grant federal in 2021, the 3.6, that's the federal earmark money from a different project that the city had a number of years ago.
All right, so PSRC is really going to move into 18 or so?
Correct. It's shown right now in the previous years, but.
Really not?
It's really not.
We need to move that over?
Yeah.
Stacy?
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to add to that, is that that would be a 2017 budget amendment, because it's currently in that budget year, so that's, that's how that would get shifted over and then get updated in the 2018-22 capital project.
Okay, because we have a match for that of, what, 300,000 or whatever that's not showing here either, right? So, I'm not sure on the 1.1 million in mitigation street fund there. I'm not sure where that's coming from.
So, I'm wondering if those are the kinds of questions, details we want tonight? Because we're talking about whether the projects are in the right priority and other questions, and then I'm wondering if that's more of a budget.
Mitigation impacts, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
When we're going to pay for it.
Right, and I think I agree with you, but right now, I'm seeing, this isn't giving me a picture of the project. There's the way the money's coming or not coming and going out. So, that's, that's where I get concerned, because that all fits. So, that's, I want to, so you see the flow of the funds as we know them, as much as we know, right?
Yeah, that's part of the issue. We don't fully know yet, so, and at the point when this is drafted, it'll look different than perhaps we think it might now, and it will look different in another couple of weeks. Those mitigation funds, this is a project that's eligible for those mitigation funds, and that's why we're showing an allocation from that fund.
I also just wanted to add that in the, in the executive summary, in the introduction, you'll see a mitigation cash flow analysis under the funding section. So, if this project had identified mitigation funds as a source of funding, then you would see that be included. And so, in that particular year, you'll see the total of the projects that are anticipated using that source of funding, so you can see the five-year cash flow analysis, and so that is available in the capital budget book.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on to Complete Streets. It's an annual program of smaller projects that have historically been focused on non-motorized type improvements, ADA, things like that, providing ADA ramps for when the overlays do, the overlays through crosswalks and so forth. The ramps need to be updated to be current standard, so the program's been helping out with that as well. That project is currently under discussion at CIC for criteria and other things, and so that conversation actually continues at the CIC this month as well. I'm going to skip over the overlay program, because Brett already did that one. Second Avenue Southeast, from Southeast Jones to Front Street. That's curb gutter sidewalk, completing it with some drainage improvements and things like that in the area of Second Avenue Southeast, south of the high school.
That's the one we talked about as a possible project this year, right?
That was one of the potentials, where we were trying to combine some different funding to get that one done. There's the Front Street Streetscape project that came out of the Visioning and Task Force this year, associated with Old Town and what Front Street should look like. It involves not only improvements on Front Street from Bush down to, I believe, Gilman Boulevard, and it also includes like a, what's the terminology? One moment, sorry. A festival street on Northwest Alder for about a block off of Front Street to give a place for people to gather, have events, things like that, that's off the mainstream of Front Street, but yet provides a good place for activities to occur that are beneficial to the merchants and the public in that area.
Sheldon?
Yes.
It may not be the whole, the engineering side of the Front Street Streetscape part, but I thought that when we removed the trees and installed some of the new wider sidewalks now, that we were going to come back really quickly with a phase that would plant trees, and then, according to the new Streetscape plan, and then move into some outer years with, you know, bigger improvements. So, is that not part of Public Works? Is that something that's going to happen now?
We can discuss that. I don't, I don't, my recollection is a little bit different. What we said was, after we removed the trees, we were going to go through the Streetscape plan, determine on a conceptual level what people wanted to see ultimately on Front Street. And then there's a subsequent conversation, which council started, about phasing of the recommendations. And so, that's where we are now, is we need your feedback on which of those recommendations you'd like to put first, last. And if there's an aspect of them that you just want to pull out, like replanting of trees, then we can talk about that, too. That's not the way we've chunked the projects in the CIP. We've taken the Streetscape plan as it had, divided up that plan, and we've put pieces in different years here.
Okay, that could be just my recollection, but I could bring it back up at budget time as well. I remember when the trees came out, we talked about why put in new sidewalk panels right away, and the explanation was, but they're removable, and we anticipated that you would be planting trees as the first thing that you would be doing.
Yeah, I don't want to call it first thing, but I think we said that certainly was anticipated to be part of the Streetscape recommendations. Yep.
And as I say, I'd like to have something planned in 18 versus waiting all the way till 19 to start getting this project going, so that seems like, you know, a two-year wait. So, I'm not sure what, but we talked about, yeah.
Sure, we can start to work on a cost estimate for that.
Yeah, we should start it in 18, I would think, from the public point of view.
Budget preview.
What's that?
Budget preview.
Budget preview.
At least for a couple.
Stacy, I have, if, if, there's no more questions on Streetscape. I had a different question. So, Sheldon, let's talk about the three-trails-crossing one, which was, where is that up there, 61? And looking at the description that goes along with this line item here, it talks about a project that is very similar to the one that is proposed in the Cost Sharing Development Agreement that council just recommended go ahead with Gilman Loss. So, I'm wondering why the $350,000 city piece didn't show up in 2018? And what the 192,000, 193,000 is in outer years? And also, part of the description of the project says that it will eliminate turning movements off of Juniper onto Rainier. And I don't remember that as part of our discussion during Land and Shore when we talked about the development agreement, that they would be eliminated. And I bring that up only because we had talked about impacts to businesses on streets with these new light installations, and I'm wondering if we did any outreach on Rainier Boulevard before we signed off on eliminating that access.
Lot of questions here. I'm going to see if I can track them.
So, are we?
The first.
Aren't we capturing questions and coming back?
Yeah, Ken.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to ask for you to maybe repeat that, so that we can get the right question down.
I'll go slow. First question was, in 2018, should we be showing $350,000, our contribution to the installation of a traffic light? What is the 193,000 shown in an outer year for? And two, the project description talks about eliminating left turns off of Juniper onto Rainier, and that is new to me. I don't remember that discussion when we were talking about the Cost Sharing Development Agreement. And the last piece is, if that is the project that is on here, and we are eliminating that, did we talk to the businesses on Rainier Avenue who can, can no longer be accessed from that direction?
So, a short answer to a lot of what your questions were is that, you know, this scope of work was a conceptual idea for costing of this CIP. The development agreement refined a lot of that. And no, there hadn't been any outreach yet about access to Rainier, Juniper, and things like that through that intersection. So, what's adopted in the development agreement, we have to revise this to reflect that. This was produced before that development agreement went through and was approved by council.
The development agreement gets us the light, though, and restricts the turning. According to this, it looks like it cuts off that turning movement.
No, the development agreement does not.
Too much for tonight.
So, I think what I'm hearing at a higher level is, this particular project was on the, was on the prior list, on the CIP. We already have a description of it. There has been an intervening action. So, can we just get a general response as to how that new development agreement affects this? And I think one of the questions I also heard is, has there been a change in the, in the prior description to this description that changes anything? I think we just need to know that. And then I would add, just listening to the conversation, did we just lift all of the project descriptions and put them in here, or have any of them changed?
For all of, lift, lift from the last, the last plan?
So, for anything we have in here, any, any project we have in here? Did we, we've had these listed somewhere, have we not?
Yes.
Okay, did we lift, copy and paste? Or have they been revised, and does the council need to be aware of that as well? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so, so let me see if I got it.
Okay.
Staff was charged with going through all the project descriptions, of course, and reviewing them and seeing if they needed to be updated for any changes to scope or conditions on the ground. And so, they have made adjustments to project descriptions, along with, of course, the cost estimates and everything else. Here is an example where we got out of sync with what was happening with council at the time, and perhaps we didn't update.
time and perhaps we didn't update this description to reflect that work. So we'll provide a new description, we'll answer your questions, we'll try to provide some clarity on what's really happening right now and what's being proposed or what's not.
Okay, I guess I'm trying to figure out if there is a reason to ask for any sort of comparison or red line or a list from department heads about what might have changed substantively. When you have the scope of a project that changes, if we don't have an alert, I mean, I can't imagine we're gonna read through everyone and compare.
Yeah. What we can try to do is point out where there's been significant changes to scope. I think by and large, and they can all correct me if I'm wrong, by and large, I don't think macro scopes of projects have changed that much. But we did go through and make sure they were still accurately reflecting the project for the most part.
Okay.
And so I think we'll, we'll try to do our best as we go along now to tell you if there's been any significant changes. I'm not aware of, as I'm trying to recollect projects, I'm not aware of big changes to scope on projects. But, but we made sure to update them if they need.
And I think big changes, scope changes, are just as important as little changes. So you're, if you get my drift. Some, some that look like they're macro details, but if you're talking about eliminating turning, not that, that's an example.
Right.
That is not a huge scope, but it's a micro detail that could be significant.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll try to use that as the filter, whatever we feel is important to point out. But just to be clear, we, we wouldn't be able to produce a red line change because we've changed the whole format of the document, et cetera.
So, yeah, because I'd assumed it was just sort of a copy and paste and as the exchange was going on, I realized that that's maybe not the case.
I think we sort of started from that, but.
Yeah, okay. Fair enough.
Okay. That's the transportation.
That's all you got?
That's all I got, because I was only dealing with the first two years.
Mariah?
I just had a question on Providence Point. We've got somebody in there for 2019, but not 2018. So we're not, not looking to work in that area until 2019.
That's the current projection for it, unless council wants to budget sooner. And that's, that's where it's forecasted right now.
Clarify.
And you just seen what the Central Park traffic light.
So let's go back. So I think, was there a question that was posed to the administration earlier this year about looking at Providence Point? And so if it looks like we're having a budget preview here, that perhaps the administration is saying we're not planning on doing anything until 2019, and yes, that would be a council decision about whether to move that up. And it sounds like maybe one of the questions is, and correct me if I'm wrong, and one of the questions that we would want to hear back is, what's the status of that and why is it not planned to spend anything until 2019? Is that a fair question, Paul?
I recall a request to prepare certain agenda bills, and I thought that one was on the list.
It is, yep.
It still is.
It is, and, and I, yeah, I think what we're planning to do is have a first conversation with the Ad Hoc Finance Committee, kind of talk about the big financial picture, then talk about what are the options if, if council does desire to utilize currently available funding sources to prioritize that project or any other one. And so we want to have that conversation first and then we'll let that inform CIP, operating budget. Conversations going forward. Okay, so let's have that, that's a question that we would like to have back in writing, please.
Just to clarify, too, not a question, actually, but it was at, at the end of the budget approval and it was a direction to prepare a proposal in first quarter of 2017 to talk about funding options, and it was agreed to go to twenty, to the second quarter.
Yep, so they're gonna give us a little synopsis of what has happened.
Mm-hmm.
So, what else?
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I think what, the comment I was gonna make is, what we're starting to wrap our arms around is the fact that we don't have an effective means to fund transportation projects in the city. So.
I'm shocked.
So, you know, we went to the voters last year and ended up, for major projects, at $50 million, it ended up just shy 55% of that 60% threshold. So I think when you look at that first table, it's just about the whole unfunded gap is transportation-related projects. And the challenge we've got is, referred from the council, and the community transportation's a number-one priority. So I think as, as we've talked about, we've gotta find a way to have additional opportunities for engagement with the council to talk about this kind of 800-pound gorilla. How are we gonna fund transportation on a regular, ongoing basis and what's the means to do it? Because we're not gonna be able to fund it out of current resources. Just, the numbers are too, too big, too large, and it could eat all of our resources and we still wouldn't make a significant dent in the problem. So it's, we could spend a whole, communicate a whole work session on this and maybe at some point down the road, we'll have to when we get into budget session. But I think that's, you're not shocked by that, it's not a surprise, but I think that's what we're seeing here is, how do we roll in Providence Point, how we roll in some of these other major projects.
Yep. Thanks, Sheldon. Well, did you have something else that I missed?
Nope. Thank you.
I guess I just, one more question. On the Tibbetts Valley Park frontage, that's related to the skate park, right? That we need to do, and so I'm just noting that that's right now, you know, showing in 2020 or 2021. And so I'm just asking the question is, that's a requirement for us to do? If we're doing a skate park now, that's like four years afterwards that we're meeting our requirements, that we would have other folks meet. So I'm just wondering how, how we feel on pushing meeting our own requirements back almost four years.
So I think one of our thoughts on that was that there's.
So there's, that's a question.
Yeah.
After questions.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm trying to move forward.
Yep, keep moving.
Sorry.
Hey, there. As we keep it moving, Jeff Watling, Director of Parks and Recreation. Try and scroll to, pardon the eyesight here, I think, one page earlier, yes. I'll use this same tool as a way to just walk through these projects, first, starting with our park. Yeah. This was, yeah, so I'll use, this is the introductory page, if you want to follow with that, is, is page five, no, not page five, page six is what I'll be going off of here.
Which 80 of your packet should be.
You do.
All right, okay.
I think Parks and Recreation is the title of the section, if you want to go into the details. Yep. So as, as a way of giving, I guess, just a broad introduction to start with, very, very excited about this new six-year planning tool. We're just as excited in the Parks Department as another new planning tool is endeavoring in the Park Strategic Plan. I bring those up in that, as we talk through these, it's, it's been an interesting challenge of sequencing for us. And I've heard actually from some of your council comments, you recognize it's often the strategic plan that is the cornerstone, or that is what informs the six-year CIP. The six-year CIP then informs budget decisions. So as we're making really a new approach to that Park Strategic Plan, the same time we're doing this, we have projects here, but these projects are really informed by the prior strategic plan. As we walk through these, we'll likely see in the, as the park plan is adopted, some, perhaps some bundling, perhaps some changes, modifications. We as staff, though, did not want to make any significant changes to these ahead of that Park Strategic Plan. That, that planning effort and that engagement with the public is critical to stay true to that. So I'll go through these projects, but just, that has been in the back of our minds and, and I think will be as we continue on in this project, or in this process. So starting from the top, Blackberry Park, and I'll focus on the 2018 and 2019 projects alone as well. Blackberry Park, this is a park that we received from King County in the South Cove neighborhood. Very interesting history to this, to this property. King County, it's not necessarily a sanctioned King County park and wasn't a sanctioned King County park, so we want to do improvements, and probably a first phase of improvements in 2018. This will be critical that we engage that neighborhood, both for what they're interested in, but also a history of that site. How were those amenities put on there? What we're seeing are amenities and features on that site that are not necessarily city-sanctioned amenities. So we've got some, some work to do that we'll be doing with the neighborhood on that project. Next project down, Creekside and Sensitive Land Purchases. This continues our strategy, focusing on strategic acquisitions and assemblages along the creek and along other sensitive areas. A priority for that work would be looking at assemblages and how we can start linking some of these properties together. It's pretty exciting, obviously looking at a map, but even through our public engagement with the strategic plan, the opportunity we have before us to begin linking the creek, Issaquah Creek, in a really significant way. So continuing with those acquisitions, these funds would definitely provide great opportunities for leveraging for grant dollars. Next project down that has funding, Central Issaquah Significant Park slash Plaza. It's quite a name. I don't know that that would be a permanent name.
Jeff, excuse me, before you continue on, so, so maybe you just said that, I was, I was still trying to catch up. So, or PK 012, you just mentioned it yourself. So in the out five years, you do have a line item for revenue being debt-bond issue, starting in 2018. Or, so, just want to be clear that these are not 2013 bond funds? Are they?
No, I would need to confirm with finance. A portion of them are. There are still some remaining 13 bond funds to be expended in land acquisition. Obviously, any outlying years, I guess that's a bit of a to-be-determined in terms of, is there, is there a future funding package that goes to the voters? Is that a bond? Is it a levy? A number of, number of decisions.
We'll get back to you on that, but we know there's a, there's a bit of that allocation that's still remaining in the 2013 bond, and so we'll, we'll check with Jen on whether that's been appropriated here in the CIP. I think we've also anticipated that there'll be a future conversation about continuing that bond, asking voters to reauthorize, basically. And that's, that's mostly what you see playing out on this particular project detail sheet.
Okay, thank you.
So maybe I've been asleep, but let's go down to part PK 022 Splash Park.
Okay, we, okay, wanna jump down to that, all right?
Just, because I.
I haven't.
I know we haven't gotten there, so this is a general, so do we have, did we approve, did we adopt, okay, so let's, so I thought things that were in here were adopted, like projects.
So in the prior, in the prior adopted parks plan, there is a project identified for a splash park. This is in a prior CIP.
Adopted CIP document. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just don't remember it.
So I, I think, as we're, as we're mentioning this, I think there's opportunity, this is a great example of probably a project that through the Park Strategic Plan effort that's going on right now, could be bundled or could be pulled together with some other master planning effort to determine that, as opposed to being a standalone project.
Okay, so, just confirming my understanding that there's nothing new in here.
Nothing new in here.
Okay.
Well, except for, there have been a few things that we had, like Blackberry Park is, is I think new to this CIP. So we, for the most part, Jeff and crew, as he said, kind of took last, the last strategic plan, took the projects that were still remaining in there, wove those into this CIP. But we, we also did step back and kind of say, you know, what else do we need to attend to? Blackberry Park is one of those examples.
Right. A question on, I think you're coming up to the Park Master Planning.
Yes.
In the description, it kind of looks like we're building an off-leash park in 2018.
See, I'm happy to, why don't I jump to that? And then we'll go back to Central Issaquah Significant Park. So, so this, this project is, is I think a great example of the sequencing reality, that here we are doing a Park Strategic Plan and we're trying to put together a CIP planning document for the next year. So this idea of Park Master Planning is how do we set aside some, some funds in 2018 and 2019 and know that we, we're gonna need to endeavor into some master planning? It's that master planning work that's gonna help define what the project is. Yes, what's identified in the description is a consideration of an off-leash dog area. I think what is also considered is master planning work at Tibbetts Valley Park. Again, the, the Park Strategic Plan, I believe, will ultimately inform what we launch into for, for Park Master Planning the next couple of years. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a stretch to say, certainly given the comments we've heard, there's a tremendous interest in an off-leash dog park being an amenity that's added into our park system, so.
Can you add the word construct?
What's that?
Can you add the word construct off-leash park in 2018?
If we add some money as well. But that, that becomes a budgetary discussion. So again, that's, excited about this work, but there really is an interesting sequencing to, with the Park Strategic Plan going on right now. So hopefully by budget time, we'll have.
Yeah, I'm kind of getting more like the Public Works Engineering, is that there's like a, there's a planning phase and then there's a design phase and construction. And what confused me here is, planning for a dog park in my mind is not a huge, big deal. It's not a $285,000 deal. It's part of that maybe, but I was looking as to whether or not this included construction of a facility like that.
It did not include construction. It's a placeholder for Park Master Planning. So again, I, that's not trying to say a Park Master Planning effort for an off-leash dog park would cost that much, because I don't think it would. I do think there would be a, some very important, careful work for where we cite it, what are the options? Are we citing, are we considering multiple throughout the community or just one?
I hear a question that we need more information on that one. Thanks.
Definitely.
Yep. Okay, where was I? Let's go back up one to project seven, the, the park to be named later, Central Issaquah Significant Park Plaza. Again, a bit of a placeholder, but certainly recognizing, and this was in the prior CIP, identified as a project, I think it was referred to as an urban vitality center. Again, also a very broad term, but this really is our, let's seek an opportunity, could mean through some acquisition, but how do we identify a public-scale central park that is part of or within the Central Issaquah area? Again, a lot of, I think, planning that's gonna come out of the strategic plan will have, better help inform this. I think the concept and the idea, the premise is, as we're looking at a green necklace and defining the green necklace, this would be a bit of a pendant on that green necklace, if you will. So wanted to identify that as a, a project that clearly still needs some further definition.
A question on that one.
Yep.
Jeff, when you look at the financial part of that.
If it's a required park in the Central Issaquah area, why isn't it being paid for entirely through development fees, that area? You don't have to answer, you can just take it away.
Question.
Good takeaway.
Why would we expect our residents to?
Got it. Next.
Go into that.
Great.
I guess I would just add to that if, if there was still discussion around, I know we're not really using the term anchor project at this point, but with thinking about those kinds of projects and trying to build in the plazas and that kind of thing, I'm just wondering if that's still an idea that's being worked on, because it's something was talked about a lot on economic vitality.
Yes. I can say as we work hand-in-hand with DSD. I can say as we work hand in hand with DSD, I think what we're trying to find is how do we mesh public scale park space needs with clearly the plaza, the onsite, private development spaces as, as development occurs? And that, I think what we're trying to mesh is a balance between those two important spaces, gathering spaces. Okay, next, Central Park Improvements. Again, another example of, I think, the to be determined through the Park Strategic Planning effort. We know through that site development work, development of Pad Four has been identified as, as interest and priority. I think that, that strategic plan will help really to inform, and as those strategic projects are prioritized, where this, where this may fall. But there are certainly investment opportunities that remain there at Central Park. Gateway Park, this is a parcel and a trail that is, the city will be receiving as part of the Gateway Development Project. This would be proposing development of that park space. Confluence Park Improvements, again, as Phase Two is, is nearing completion. Hope you've had a chance to go and walk it as the fences are down. Another week or two and the fences will be down on the, on the bridge. Very exciting. But again, as we lean into, there's another, a next set of investments that we want to be looking at for that, for that project. So again, I think the Park Strategic Plan becomes that, that vehicle, and that vehicle for public engagement to see where, what, what that might be and where that, where that ranks in priority.
Question.
Yep.
So I remember the master plan for Confluence, that later phase, I'm assuming would be inclusive of developing the land where the Parks Maintenance Facility is today. I think I see elsewhere in here potential merger of parks and PWO maintenance facilities, but it's in further out years, which doesn't really jibe with this investment for Phase Three.
Yeah, so like I said, I think what Phase Three might be is, is to be, to be determined. Clearly, if any future phase of Confluence involves moving a park into that maintenance space, you're absolutely right, we need a solution for where that maintenance space goes. Other phases that are potential within Confluence Park, the Eck House, there's a commitment to restoring that facility. I think we've certainly heard also some community interest in how we might take the lawn areas of Confluence Park and make those more usable. So again, phasing, the next phase, the next set of investments is to be determined.
Okay, fair enough. I might be hung up a little bit into maybe the phasing that's outlined in the master, original master plan.
Right, yes.
And I realize that's a, a great, a wish list. Actual implementation of them will, is unfolding a different set of phases, but it's still working off the master plan.
Right, yes, it is. Bear Creek Trailhead Developments. This is a trailhead opportunity that has been identified for a number of years now to access the Talis Native Growth Protection Area off of State Route 900, some city-owned property that abuts State Route 900. Opportunity to create a 10 to 15 stall trailhead for both Talis, like I said, Talis Native Protection Area, and Cougar Mountain. Very limited spaces for the rest of our residents to park and access that space. So this provides, would provide an opportunity to do so. Playground Equipment Replacement. This is really taking a sort of a life cycle approach to our play equipment throughout the whole system. At any given year, we have, we have play equipment that's aging out. I also think as we're, again, the Park Strategic Plan will help to inform, but the desire, the interest for creating more diverse play experiences throughout our parks is something we're hearing in the, in the public outreach. So as we, as we set a life cycle approach to replacing play equipment, let's also look at opportunities for diversity, also accessibility. This, this project, this funding would also not just look at the equipment itself, but surfacing. Are there opportunities for surfacing that provides better access for all abilities?
So Jeff, before you move on from that.
Yeah.
So related, so replacement of playground equipment, I get that. There's another replacement of turf or maintenance. So before you answer that question, you said that these came from the previous strategic plan, and I note that every one of them has spending proposed in the next two years. Is it possible that there are others that were on the pre-existing strategic plan that just, you just don't show here, that may have some more out-year stuff? And, and so that's one question. And then if so, is, was maintenance, planned maintenance, because I think it would be a capital type expense for turf fields, is that in there anywhere?
That's a question.
It's a question, okay.
So I, so, so you asked if there were some, the answer is yes or no?
Did you actually?
Well, yes, it's, it's, it's not just make work.
I'm, I'm thinking particularly about turf maintenance, and that made me think, I, I don't know if it's on a list anywhere. And I know, like, we have a transportation improvement, so we have a list of, of transportation projects and a, and, but only some of them that are going to be funded in the next two years. Is this just the sum in the next few years, or is there a longer list and is, is turf on there?
This does not reflect all that is in the Park Strategic Plan.
Right.
As adopted.
Okay.
Yes, turf managed, turf replacement of our synthetic turf fields is certainly something that's, that's to be considered and has been considered.
Thank you.
Do you still have a question out there?
Well, he didn't, he disagreed with me. It needs to be considered. So, so no, we don't have the answer yet.
Okay, just making sure that we have a, your question to be answered.
Splash Park, again, identified in a prior CIP. I think a lot of work would need to be happened, would need to incur in terms of where that's located. Again, the Park Strategic Plan, I think, presents the opportunity to bundle a single amenity like this into some bigger master planning effort or site planning effort.
So I was just wondering, I know something is being built in the Highlands right now, and I didn't know if that was a splash park behind Dix. And I know that they're, like, having indoor surfing, but I thought that there was a splash park maybe too? I just thought I'd bring it up.
Yeah, that's a private development, city surf, I think is the, the name of it.
Is that a splash park too?
And it's all indoor. No, so it will not include a public splash park.
Okay.
So it goes with the major 2018, 19 projects. Any other questions? Yes, that was next.
Again, I was just trying to go back and find an old CIP plan, but it looks really short. So I'm assuming that once you finish your strategic plan, something happens. Why is the Pickering Trail priced out at $7.6 million? Take it away. You don't have to answer.
Okay. Gets up.
It seems like a lot of money for a trail.
It's identified by Public Works Engineering.
The Pickering Trail is about $7.00?
We can answer.
Yeah.
Two facility-related items to the, within the department I wanted to mention, within the municipal facility section, it's pool facility improvement and community center improvement. First, the pool facility improvement, this is, again, an aging life cycle situation. The roof of the pool is beginning to show its age and age out. As, as I understand, the prior investments that were made in that pool have been great investments, as that, the scope of that project really needed to be pared down. And knowing all the systems improvements, the HVAC system, the filtration system, and all the internal workings that needed to happen, the, the $5 million didn't go so far as addressing the roof. So what we're proposing in this is looking at the, in 2018, the exterior roof, the shingles, and the plywood sheeting are at an age, they're ready and need to be replaced. So that is what is being proposed in 2018. Pertaining to the community center, that funding request has to do with the flooring. We have the original flooring within the gym area, that is the original, original carpeted flooring. We are beginning, that's, that's showing its age and, and showing it's a, a well-loved, a well-loved carpet that is needing to be, needing to be replaced. That's it.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yep.
Next, oh, is it break? Are we done? Is it? Break time. Or Bill, did you have a question before we break? Okay, we're taking a 10-minute break.
And when we return?
We are back from our break. And we have finished with the first part of the agenda, which is going through the department presentations. And the next item on the agenda is city council deliberations. And we've scheduled 90 minutes for that. But, so here are my thoughts. We have a very large, brand-new body of work in front of us. And we have asked a number of questions. And I think we're all trying to process what we've heard, what we've read. And for me, anyway, as I go through this document, big document again, I will be looking at it differently with the new information that I have and the information that I expect to come at our next meeting, which on this topic is June 12th. So what I thought we would do for the rest of the time, however long that takes, and I'm guessing it's not going to take 90 minutes, is to provide, ask additional questions that you might have, that you might have thought about over the break or just come to you. Additional questions about the document or the process. And then also provide feedback, suggestions about, be about tonight's process so far. What you might like to see as part of the future process for this. And also any other constructive feedback that you might have about the document itself. And then at our next meeting, I think then we would get questions answered. We may have other questions, but then if that's appropriate, then we would start deliberating at that time. So how does everybody feel about that? I do think about, as you go away tonight, think about one thing. I think the administration will be asking me, as they already asked me this morning, and I said, "I don't know." Do we want to potentially parcel this out to go to different committees? As we have done in the past with our Capitol, is it with the CFP?
Yeah, so the, yeah, there's really two ways to ask it. What you just did, which is what we've done in the past. Or we could just have it come back to committee of the whole again and just as a group.
Work session.
Work session. And the only concern was on that date. There's like another two hours of review that the council has on top of this three. So one of the questions was if you wanted to do it that method, yeah, special meeting.
So it either parcel out to committees and come back or try to get it into that June 12th meeting, finish our work, or add another special meeting? Well?
The end game for this process. You provided, you've been calling it, I think, a book. Oh, the budget book, what have you been calling it? The...
It's referred to the capital budget, so different from the operating budget. And so it is, the end game is essentially to adopt the capital budget in July.
Okay, so, and so it's not fund-based, it's just these projects. You've got them categorized and sorted certain ways. You've got definitions of them. You've got spend amounts in given years. You've identified revenue in given years. Are you expecting us to, you know, what granularity of deliberations were you expecting? Maybe I shouldn't be asking that question, but I'm curious because you can get to a lot of detail. You know, some of them have revenue lines. And we could talk about, well, what are you doing that for? But I don't, you know, if I think about knowing that in the end, things will be operationalized in our operational budget that we currently do yearly. I think the finer level of detail would be settled then. So my instinct is that we're not, in this deliberation process, the end game for this process isn't going to be that detail. But I just throw that out there for conversation. I'm just trying to understand, trying to visualize what it is the final work effort will include for this project.
Yeah, and I think part of that, that was what you asked in this list. So is the mix of projects, does the mix, and then are the priorities right?
That's correct. What I would like to, for you to consider is that the capital budget is essentially where the detail is. And then in the operating budget is where you would see fund-based. And so for these particular projects, you would see, they would be maybe separated in a lump sum by a project, but it would be identified as the park capital project fund is where all the park projects you would see. Same thing for the street capital project fund. That's where you would see, on the operating budget side, you would see one or multiple line items that would say 2018 capital, CIP, per the CIP. So that's where you would see that chunk of money. The detail would be at the project level.
Yeah, the other comment I would make is that. So what you're seeing on the 2018 list for all those, even though we've been talking about two years, when we go through the operating budget, you're going to see the ones we actually were able to fund in that, in the operating budget when you deliberate this fall. So we will, more than likely, I probably guess 98% of the projects that you see listed in 2018 are the ones that we'll end up focusing in on what will be able to fit into the budget for next year. Now, what you may see is a project in 19 that, at the next meeting, you come back and say, "We really want," you know, "that project moved up and considered and competed with, and competing with the other projects that you're considering for 18." But that, you know, you're going to get another bite at the apple really when it fits within the whole overall budget for the fall. So you're right, on the level granularity. Now, there may be some overarching themes, I think, that you come out, like the obvious one that I talked about earlier, that the council says, "We got to put that on a work plan. Let's work together on how we find a solution for that." And that could, that could come in.
So, um... So I'm trying to figure out, I want to do it in a semi-organized way. And so I don't, maybe we should go around the table and ask questions outstanding? Yeah, I almost look at those as the deliberation questions. So I think we should save the questions for next time, and they may be even be able to be refined a bit. But I'm wondering if we want to go around and ask any outstanding questions that we have, whether it's about the document itself or whether it's about the process. And then we could also provide comments that we might have that I mentioned before about the document or the process so far or what you'd like to see. And then I would like a little, some guidance about what would you, what do you want to do next in terms of full council review or, and does that need to be a special meeting? Or do you want to segment it out and have it go to committees? I would like some guidance on that. Does anybody want to do it differently? No? Yes. Bailey's dying to go first. Okay, outstanding questions, whatever they might be.
So we talked a bit about, at the break, and I think two of the outstanding questions for me. One is, I quickly pulled up the oldest version of this, or the most recent version of the CIP I could find. And I am having a hard time looking at lists and seeing what's new or what might have fallen off. So based on that 2014 to 2018 plan, a list of what's fallen off. And that would include for me something that was proposed for earlier years and never done. So anything that's fallen off and what's been added. And I couldn't find the Central Issaquah Park, Central Issaquah Significant Park on that old list. So there's got to be a few additions to. So those two lists would be helpful. Under the organization, I love the look of this new document. I think just from a sort of a user-friendly point of view, tabs in printed copies or bookmarks in the electronic copy would help. We still seem to have the confusion between, some of the material that's presented is by department and the book, then page numbers don't match up. So you hear a lot of rustling over here. And a table of contents would be great. Things I really like about this new format is I like the rankings and I love the detailed financials that show revenues and expenses per project. I mean, that may not be exactly the way a project is funded, but it is awesome to see that early on. I have a lot of questions about, in particular, the Three Trails project and how that matches up from a funding and a scheduling and even how that intersection works point of view from the recent development agreement cost sharing that we went through and what's in this package. As far as whether it goes to the different committees, I actually really like doing this as a whole council. I think I would like to see it stay with the whole council, with the option not to review entire lists back, but maybe a particular project back to a committee. So that if there's one thing on the parks that needs a little bit more digging, send that back to the services committee. If there's a transportation project, send it back to the infrastructure one, but not necessarily the entire list. I think this was a great format to do it. I'd like to see, to be determined, added into the charts in the year that you expect to do the work. For example, there was one project that had a description about construction in 2021, and 2021 showed a dash. It should show a TBD in the year that it's expected to be constructed or a TBD in the outer year column. And that was it.
Thank you. Next, we can go around in order or not in order, so. You ready?
Sure. So I really do like the layout, again, in the detail, for sure. One of the questions, I had technical questions, because on our agenda, it says the next meeting is June 5th, which is a regular council meeting. You said June 12th, and then we talked about the process here. And I know we're going to talk about, if we're going to do another one or not, but the public's getting June 5th is our next one.
I think that's probably Agenda Bill referral? No?
That was identified as the, a public engagement effort and a public hearing to take public testimony.
Okay. And then either coming back to us on the 12th work session or another one, whenever we figure that out, okay. And then what I didn't understand quite when you said, Jen, where the detail would be. So you're looking at getting a CIP approved in July. And, but you said then the, it goes into the budget and that's where we work it out. And you said, but then the detail will be in the project. So I don't know where the project is. If it's in the budget, in the CIP, where is that project?
The project is in the CIP. Project is in this book.
All right. So the operating budget will refer to the detail in here?
That is correct.
All right, that's why I want to make sure. Okay. Couple comments when we saw, the question I brought up a couple of times on 2018 commitments of what's in there. I think there's some things that I think we saw that need to be brought up in 18 to be discussed, like front street, streetscape and those kinds of things. Make sure we have a chance to talk about them versus pushing them back. So I want to make sure some of those things get up. The other ones is, other one is, I think would be great if, if planning for funding of a project is by debt, then we should do, have some highlight or asterisk or something so you see that right off. So if it's, you know, some sort of debt occurrence to make this happen, right away that's noticed that, okay, we're not funding this without taking on something additional would be nice as well. And that's it for now. Pass it and come back later.
So overall, I... Overall, I really like, I like the layout. I like to be able to look at the overview of the project and then go down to all of the budget information by project. the budget information by project. So I thought that that was great. It would have just been wonderful and easier if we just, because we, some of us have a printed packet, if we just would have said what page we were on. So we weren't wrestling, because then you kind of lose track of things as you're trying to find something. So a little bit hard to follow tonight, but overall, when I'm looking at that, I think it's set up really well. And I do like the ranking. I think that that's helpful as we're, as we're trying to deliberate. And I really, the TBD issue that Mary Lou talked about, I think is really important, because I just like to see a placeholder that, to know that there's further discussion going on. I guess I would be, there's so much here, and conversations even about the mix of projects and the priorities. I would love to, to think that we could do one more session and get through all of that. I'm just, I'm just not positive, but I don't know if we would have time to break it out, have it go to committee, and then come back and talk about it. But I sort of feel like it's, it's fast to go even through the mix of projects and priorities. Even as we were talking about parks, we were, we were talking about, well, you know, in terms of, you know, where that strategic plan is and what's on the list. And then we've also got the great idea from Mary Lou about the list of what might have fallen off and what might be added. But it sounds like we're trying to merge this into another meeting where we have another two-hour agenda. I'm just not positive that we can get through all of that.
Okay.
Yeah, a couple comments. I'm going to start with Bill's, he said, highlight those that require bond. And it's on, so this is in the electronic copy of the packet, on page 18 of 271. And you pointed this out earlier, Jen, it's where you had it summarized, the resources summary, debt bond proceeds. You had it in the five years, 18 through 22, and then in future years. And I think the numbers in that table represent the amounts this plan requires from a bond. And maybe, maybe just expanding that a little bit more, and then actually put the parks projects underneath that, put the transportation projects underneath that. Then we've got them all highlighted together in one place. And I would say, continue to use those codes. You've given them all codes, all the projects' codes. Brett had them in his presentation, had them up in the upper-left corner. Now, he had one of them wrong, so it made it kind of hard for me to find it. But I was using the find feature electronically. It's easier to jump around, but I sympathize if you don't, on not using the electronic copy. I'm going to actually, another question or point related, you have, on that same page, you have the mitigation fund. And it's, I like looking at it in summary in this way. I appreciate that. Two things jumped out at me if I just look at that, and this, again, this is on page 18 of 271 from the entire packet. You know, I'm looking at this, so I realize it's mitigation, so it has to do with, it's capacity-related question, but there's nothing in the next five years related to capacity for fire or bike or pit. And I think that's a question for us, which actually then took me to the next level. When we did our operational budget in the fall, we had kind of, as a council, came together on a set of priorities, transportation, moratorium-related priorities. Let's make sure that this is reflected in our operational budget. We don't have the same kind of guideposts for this longer-term capital and plan. We don't have a strategic plan for the city as well. But I'm still going to think that way. So when I see there's no spending, growth-related, or capacity-related for fire or bike and pit, you know, I wonder why that is. And it suggests to me, maybe, you know, maybe we're not properly prioritizing. Maybe there's big issues that we're missing. And potentially then other issues. If I think about at the city level wider, a lot of us, we're having, we're doing a housing strategy and a housing plan, for example. Now, you know, we don't own housing and haven't typically done a lot of housing, but it's easy to, you know, think about those as other priorities for the city, and there's nothing capital-wise that we're going to do any spending, not only in housing, which is not one of our categories, but nothing in fire or bike or pit. So I'd like to, I think, I think a council-level, and maybe an administration-level conversation just about to explore that fact would be helpful. And then the last thing I wanted to mention as well is, and maybe, maybe it's down in the details, so you also had provided on page 19 of 271, the REIT breakout, REIT 1, 2, and then total. And it's, yeah, so again, you know, maybe, maybe there's a, just like with the bond-related, a list of projects associated with that. It's maybe just another tabular report or a spreadsheet, but it's, but things coalesce around these sources. And being able to see that, I think would just be another way of looking at it would be very helpful.
Eileen?
First off, excuse me, first off, I think it's important that we stay together, as opposed to breaking out into committees. We would just have to then get caught up with what the other conversation was, and so we'd be repeating ourselves. So if we can just get together for one more time, or whatever time we need. The new layout, I love this. You can just take a look, and you can get all of the information that you need in regards to any one of these projects that are on the, on the plan. And for the most part, it's, it's a great piece of information. It's, it literally tells you all the information, the basic information that you need, and you can always go forward and dig a little bit deeper if you need to. But this, this was just really wonderful. So the information was very, very useful. And the only thing I had too, was trying to follow where, and I kept wrestling back and forth, trying to, you know, there was a little confusion as to how to follow, and I'm not sure if we can somehow improve that, because it's literally, you know, what we're picking out. One of the pieces that's not here is, I guess maybe, in a lot of them there is though, where some of the funding is coming from. And if we can capture that, that is also a very important one, I think, for me. So that would be it.
Okay, I'll be quick. One of the questions I have is fire station, planning for a, potentially, and I didn't see that in here. And then number two, I would plus one to all the organizational comments about the document. The one that I have that might be slightly different is if you go to each of the different sections, so if you can start with, I don't know, let's start with a longer one, Parks and Rec, and you have a list of the projects and priority, then the project detail is contained in each one of the sheets, and they're in the, they're in the packet in order that they are in priority. And so you can't, there's no, you have to count, let's see which sheet is it. So I would keep these in order of the number, the actual project number. So if you're looking for PK 021, which is bottom, second from the last, you don't have to count, or maybe the middle one is a better example. If it's PK 010, you know how to, it's like, okay, that's eight, eight, nine, 10, there we go. So, simple thing, but it, yeah, but it helps. But I'm really excited about, about this. I mean, this is fantastic. And, you know, we've had some of this information before, we haven't had the funding piece, we haven't had the planning, this as a planning tool, and I just, I'm very excited about it. Thank you very much for all the work. I think you've been totally buried with it, and a lot of other staff members have as well. It's been a big effort. Do you have any questions for us? I think I heard a fairly strong desire when Eileen said, keep together as a group. Paul said plus one, so I think that's, everybody wanted to stick together. If I suppose if there was an outlying question about a project that we figure out, that comes to the surface later on, and we wanted to talk about it in more detail, we could send that to committee for more discussion. So leadership will look at planning over the next month and see if it looks like we're going to be able to get this done. The one question that popped up is, the plan was to get this adopted in July, and what if we don't?
The goal, and the reason for having it adopted in July is so that it would essentially be kind of one of the items off of our checklist for, you know, the budgeting, is that we would, we would know some of those numbers that we would, we would plug into the operating budget. So the, if we, we kind of flow into the end of July or August, you know, that is something because we want to make sure that we, that we have a good plan. That, I still think that that is a possibility, but that certainly does kind of really push us up, up against the law with regards to presenting an operating budget with these components in there. So it, it would be ideal to be done in July, and so.
There's no law.
Yeah. There, yeah, there's no rule, hard, fast rule about the date that this has to be adopted.
So the, so I just asked the question because I just wanted to know, but I think the practical effect is, we're coming upon a deadline in, what, early September, where we have to make a decision about the moratorium as well. And we're going to have a huge push toward the end of the summer, I believe. And I think that, my own opinion is, we had to do everything that we can do to get this done in the timeframe that it's been suggested to us that it gets done, so that we don't, we don't need one more big work plan item that, during a time when, you know, in August, when particularly not only us, but other, you know, staff members and administrators are looking at, you know, vacations and time with family, that's probably the not, not the ideal time to try to do some really difficult work. So I think we're going to try to get it, get it done. I know, Emily, you had something to say?
Yeah, I just want to point out something else that I think is cool about our new process. Jen talked about how it would be helpful to know this in July so that we can wrap the, I interpreted this, wrap the projects into our operating budget. But there's a whole nother piece we've asked our staff to kind of improve upon, and that's forecasting from the capital budget. What's the ripple over to the operating budget? So what, you know, staffing impacts, what supplies, what professional services might need to be included in the operating budget? And so knowing that before departments go and do their work on their operating budget would be very helpful.
Excellent. Okay, is everybody okay with that? We'll go forth and work a little more closely with the administration to see how we can get this done in August and adopted in July as scheduled? Oh, I can tell you're.
Well, just one more ask. In my time on, on the council, you know, we haven't gone through a process like this. So one thing that might help me, however, we, we've backed into a capital budget every year, operational, with the operational budget that we have. And if it's easy, maybe go look at the 2017 or the 2016 operational budget, and, and kind of pull out those that would, that were from capital plan, and organize it maybe by the subject areas you have here, organization that you have. And I, just let me see, like, what have we done in the past comparably, you know, financially? Again, you have, you have the organization of, you know, starts with technology and systems, you have transportation, you have, you have capital, you have, you have the category that says capital in its name, capital equipment, I think. I don't know if that, if that's easy, then I, I think that would help me, because I'm pretty sure what we're going to be doing is, it's this general, it's these class of projects, it's this total amount, this is kind of what I know about expenses and revenue. Yes, we might be buying into something in the future that we haven't decided yet, so that's a big question out in front of us. But we just got to draw a line in the sand somewhere and say, okay, this is good enough for now. We're not trying to balance a budget like we do, right, normally, but it's good enough to hand over for you now to work on the operational budget. I had kind of a yard post that I could compare it to in the past would be, if we could go back and look at recent budgets and put it, you know, show us the capital dollars in these various categories, if that's easy to do. I'm not getting any non-verbal language that says, yeah, we think we can do that, so. But I'm only saying that because I'm doing this for the first time this way, and that would be, would be helpful, have that additional information if it's available.
Sure. I think we can talk about that. The other thing that's popping in my head is just, the funding sources do change so dramatically from year to year, so what you would extrapolate from that information is just something to contemplate a little bit.
Yeah, and it may not be so dependent upon the funding sources as it is upon, like I say, you've got the categories, you've got the total spend in each year. And so, you know, what have we done in IT? What have we done in capital equipment? What have we done in parks? What have we done in PWO or E or whatever?
Right. And when I said funding sources, I don't mean just what are the type of funding sources, but the magnitude of each of those changes from year to year. So that, that's what I mean. To say, it looks like we have spent this much on equipment in the past, perhaps we have less this year, perhaps we have more.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, because, and even if you look at this plan, there's, there's quite a bit of variation in some of them year over year. I get all that, but.
Are you?
So that would be, let me just say, that would be nice to have. I'll leave it as a nice to have. Thank you.
Okay, Mary Lou?
So I'm going to plus one what Paul said, but not from a data point of view. I think what would be helpful to me is when we get an introductory letter, say, from the mayor. I think it's going to be hard on transportation projects, if we have some big ones with huge granting amounts, to compare it to years when those projects aren't on the table. But something in written form that, that sort of gets at what Paul's saying is, maybe we've just gotten a few big projects off the book, and it may look like we're spending less dollars on transportation, but out of our own pocket, it's about the same number. Or there's a switch this year, and transportation's down a little bit because we have a focus on parks. We're spending a little more on parks than we used to. So it does, for me, I don't know if it needs to be in the numbers format, although I think that's a good idea, but something that explains to us where our priorities are. The three of us spent a long time last year looking and trying to decide council priorities, and it would be interesting to see the same sort of general descriptions from the administration when they present as well.
The only thing, I guess, that leaves me where I'm going to have a little problem thinking, and it goes to the parks stuff, because of that, without the park strategic plan, this, this kind of feels like pseudo thing for me, and I'm not, I forget the date when we're looking at getting that done, but that's going to really, I mean, it could be totally different when we get to that point. And so I'm feeling kind of awkward with that piece of it on what projects we really want to fund, because that's going to tell us where, where we are, and we're kind of in limbo land now. So I don't know, Jeff, you remember about when we have that strategic plan done? Just as a quick question for me.
Fourth quarter. I mean, so I'd say realistically, I mean, even having any sort of working draft is probably October-ish.
So it's definitely past. That's what I thought.
Keep in mind that we don't have any strategic plan. It's not just parks.
Yeah, but that's, we know that one's coming, so.
Which one? The parks one?
The parks, yeah.
Yeah, but, go ahead. Sorry.
The other thing that I would just add to that is, if you think about this as being a two-year plan, or the projects that we're really focused on, the spend that's proposed in 2018 is significantly different than, say, 2019. And the 2018 projects that are proposed for funding, some of them are kind of annual ones we've had before, have been identified previously as priorities. And so what, part of what we tried to do was recognize, we're going to get a lot of information toward the end of this year about community priorities, and we're going to have subsequent conversations with you and community about what to fund on the park side. And so we haven't loaded up 2018, because we know that information is coming later. And if we do this as a two-year process, that second year is the year where we incorporate new information and make the revisions for those areas where we have a new strategic plan or something like that. So we fully anticipate that Jeff's going to have a lot of work to do next year to revise the 2019 plan and beyond in particular.
Anything for the good of the order? Nope? All right. So again, I want to thank you for all the work that's gone into this so far. It's been a heavy lift, and we've been anticipating this day, and it's here. So thank you very much, and we'll see you next time when we are adjourned. So thank you very much, and we'll see you next time when we are adjourned.